Well, the clock indicates to me that it's time to resume our meeting. Before we ask for our first presentation, I have a couple announcements. The first is the reminder about tomorrow's schedule. You remember we're meeting at the Brown versus Board of Education site at 1515 Southeast Monroe Street. That's just a few blocks from here. We will gather at the front of the building for a photo and a few remarks just before our meeting begins at 9:00. After our meeting adjourns, there will be a break for lunch on your own, and then the afternoon work session starts at 1:30 back at the Brown building. We will move our meeting materials into the classroom assigned for our work session before lunch. So, that bit of information. And then before lunch, we had a discussion about how we were going to move forward with collaboration on the innovative schools issue. We voted to appoint board members to a subcommittee. I wanted to let you know if you are interested in serving on that committee, let me know before we leave today, and I will make those appointments in the morning, first thing. So, think about it. Grab me at some point, or if you want, if you know you are at this point, you could just raise your hand. Everybody's gonna be coy. Okay. I've gotta write these down. Were there any others at this time?
No.
Janet, who is the first? I'm sorry. Steve Roberts, Jim McNeese. I know this is something you want to think about, Deana. If any of the others of you think about that and think you would be willing to serve on this subcommittee, please let me know before we leave today. Thank you. First up on our agenda, we're going to have a presentation on the proposed fundraising exemption policy from Cheryl Johnson. And so, we'll just turn it over to you, Cheryl.
I need to go from current slide. Oh, yes, I do have a little bit of an allergy sinus infection thing going on, so I better use this.
She's really sick.
Not really, really sick, just a little sick. But I didn't want to miss this opportunity today, because I knew we had business that needs to get done. I hope you've had a chance to think about the proposal for a policy for the exempt fundraisers since the meeting in April, and do you hope that we can get a vote or an action item today so that we can have a policy in Kansas? We do have a lot of schools that are waiting anxiously for this so that they can get their guidance prepared for the next school year. I have talked with other states. I do believe that what we are proposing in this proposal is about as liberal as any state that I've seen, if not more. I really don't think there are any states that are more liberal, to be real honest. I do know that there are some states that are interested in what we are proposing. Nebraska called me yesterday. They think it seems like a fair proposal. Georgia was thinking about doing a tiered approach, and when we talked about it last week at a meeting, she thought this was more straightforward. It might be easier to monitor, as opposed to trying to have tierings. And so, I think that was what she was gonna recommend to her state board. I know Massachusetts and Idaho are also considering what we have in front of you today. A lot of the other states are just going with zero, three, or four, or five, but to me, those really maybe aren't as good of options. So, I'm ready to hear your thoughts and how we need to tweak, or what you would like to do, and so that we can move forward and at least have some exemptions for our Kansas schools.
Give me just a minute to get to the upper place of Ken Willard. Ken Willard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only question is, with your assurance that this is as liberal as you can, as most liberal policy in the country. Is this proposal going to cause any current school district to forego some of their fundraising abilities?
I would think that there are ways they could still do those. Remember, this is just during the school day, and anything during the school day that meets the standards can still be sold to anyone at any one time, at any time. If they really want to sell to adults, or they're doing after-school or weekends, they can do that anyway. So, it really just is those hours during the school day, between eight and three, to sell to kids that this affects.
What about the information that all of us have gotten in the past week or so from the culinary class, who is trying, wanting to sell their products as part of their class activities?
Right, and they can sell those to adults at any time, of course. To the other kids, they could use their exemptions if they wanted to do a pastry sale. But a lot of what they're selling should meet the standards anyway, if they're making it. I mean, I know pastries wouldn't, or those kinds of things, but they would be able to use their exemptions for those items that don't meet. I would think we could work with them on that, is what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, and my concern is that I don't want to restrict the already functioning income streams that schools have. If that's, if it's going to cause hardship for a school because it limits their fundraising ability, then I'm gonna oppose it. That's my concern.
What I see is more parents support those, as opposed to the kids during the school day. I mean, some, in high schools, some of the students do buy, but again, the adults support those, and they can still sell those to the adults. So, we have to remember that as well. I mean, I don't know. We have to stay within the intent of the law, where the smart snacks rule. We're supposed to uphold the integrity of that with our exemption policy, so that we don't have so many that we're not upholding the intent of the law. I think we're being pretty liberal, the way this is, but, you know, some might say maybe that should be just one exempt fundraiser per year, per organization. We're doing actually one per semester, so each culinary class or hour could do one each semester, and if you think how many different classes there are, I mean, we're not gonna get that picky about how this is enforced, I wouldn't think, if you understand what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, and I'm just, will be interested in how it plays out.
The other thing is, and I know we have the opportunity, you know, that we'll look at it and evaluate it. If we don't think it's playing out like it should, or it's causing a hardship, we can make those comments to USDA. And I really feel that they would listen to that, because I think they're at the point where they haven't written the final rule yet for this. They are wanting our comments, and have actually told us that they want to hear from us. It's still an interim final rule.
What if the final rule is more restrictive than what we're proposing?
I don't think it will be.
Well.
Well, we don't know, but I don't think that's what they're thinking.
It might be a good point, Ken, down the road. I mean, really, say, six months down the road, take another look at it. See if there's any problems, and review it.
And I'd be willing to do that.
You can't predict what the feds may do.
No, you can't, except that they're probably gonna step on you someplace.
Well, they've asked us, though, to find out issues schools are having, so it's more like they're caring that they don't want it to be a hardship. That's how they've at least approached it to us.
I don't think it hurt a thing at all, say, after the semester, next year, come back and kinda do a review, see where we stand, if there is a problem.
Are most schools aware of what's being proposed, and have you, what kind of input have you gotten?
We have had input at our wellness workshops from this past year, and at our Wellness Policy Summit. And so, how many would you say we've had school personnel, up over 500 people have given input?
Council.
The Council of Superintendents. I mean, we have been out there, and they are the ones that actually came up with this. We didn't, from our team. This was initially, I think, brought up from the Council of Superintendents. It was their idea first, and then we presented it, and we had people vote at all of our Smart Snacks workshops, and this overwhelmingly was their choice.
Okay, thank you.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for all the input that you've received on this. I too have had extensive conversations with principals, superintendents, and teachers on this. And quite frankly, some schools, they're not gonna, they don't want to sell anything non-nutritious. You know, they want to eliminate that, and not just because of the food issue, you know, it just, they don't want to do that during the school day.
Right.
It's disruptive.
We have heard that.
At elementary and high school. And they kinda feel bad because they had the cover of this. You know, but the reality is that there are other schools that, quite frankly, are way overboard. You know, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a single day. My, I have a question, though. Define the school day precisely in terms of time and how it impacts the sale during the lunch periods.
Okay, so the school day is defined as from midnight until 30 minutes after the end of the instructional day. And if your item that you're selling meets the nutrition standards, you can even sell that during the lunch hour. So, if you had a culinary class that was selling something healthy when they couldn't have this year, next year they'll be able to sell during the school lunch period. But if it's an exempt fundraiser, then you cannot sell during the breakfast meal period or the lunch meal period. You would be able to sell it at other times through the school day.
So, other times, passing period, walking into class and hawking stuff?
Right, that's about it. That's really what we're talking about.
Yeah, there is a misconception here about that this gives them the ability to sell these non-nutritious during lunch.
No, and that's been very clear as we've done our training, but I think in the public, you're correct, there are people that think, oh, they-
Well, even in the school business.
Yeah.
You know, they think it's, they can do that, and that's, because really, the limitation is.
Right.
The other thing that's confusing sometimes is, they can sell anything that can, that is to be consumed off-campus.
Yes.
Yes.
They can.
That they're not restricted from, you know, pie sales, or lollipops, or whatever.
Not if it's not consumed during the school day by students.
Right.
And currently, see, they shouldn't have been selling things with foods of minimal nutritional value during the lunch period, and some may have been.
I can't imagine.
So, that really wouldn't have been a change, but-
Just to clarify for me.
For everyone, yes.
For me, thank you.
You are correct.
Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think my questions have been answered. I just, the only concern I've had raised is this one email from this culinary arts, and I got it, opened it this morning. I received it apparently yesterday. I was busy yesterday. Didn't open my email last night, so that's the only concern I've had raised. I was curious about the other-
And it doesn't affect what they prepare during their educational program. It doesn't affect that in any way. It would just be if they sold those items. I have heard that they like to sell items so that they can go to their trips in the summer. But I do think they'll find ways. I know some of them sell soups, which would meet the standard, breads, which would meet the standard. I mean, it wouldn't limit a lot of the things, other than their pastry items, probably, or if they did cookies every day, or something.
So, there's no way of making a cookie nutritional?
Yes, there are ways, and they could sell some of those.
Okay, that's correct, thanks.
You're saying someone might not buy it. I know what they're talking about.
Sally Cobble.
Thank you. I want one of those cookies. The very last bullet, the length of the organization exempt fundraiser cannot exceed two days. Is that, is that something we have to have in it to meet the criteria of the?
We do not, but our schools wanted us, especially our food service directors, because if we just said, you know, if we don't define that, it could be all semester, the one exempt for all semester.
Well, I-
And that will not go by USDA, I know.
I would rather the local school boards determine the length of time for that fundraiser instead of the state board.
I don't know that we can do that, because we got a policy memo out that said we couldn't leave this to the local school board's discretion. We got an actual additional memo out from USDA. We wished we could have done that to begin with.
Okay.
But we can't do that, unfortunately.
Okay, Madam Chair, I would so move that we adopt the policy proposal on the screen.
Steve, I'll call on you after I deal with this motion. Sally has moved that we approve, and Jim McNeese seconds the motion. Now, there's discussion, and Steve Roberts had a comment before Sally made the motion, but you can tell us now.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your work on this. I know it's not easy. I was able to go through the Federal Register where this came from, and they cited two executive orders, one from the Clinton administration, and one from the Obama administration. And I just want to remark on the difference between the two perspectives. Executive Order 13563 from 2011, that would be the Obama administration, by the authority vested in me as president by the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America, and in order to improve regulation and regulatory review, it is hereby ordered as follows, and then it's Section 1. Kinda sounds like it was written by a lawyer. The other executive order referenced in the Federal Register is 12866 from 1993, that would be the Clinton administration, and it begins, "The American people deserve a regulatory system that works for them, not against them. A regulatory system that protects and improves their health, safety, and environment well-being, and improves the performance of the economy without imposing unacceptable or unreasonable costs on society." I think we're kinda moving in the wrong direction. So philosophically, I don't like this at all. I will support the motion, to give you support on what you're dealing with, but philosophically, I think we can do much better. Thank you.
Well, I am just glad that you're willing to have an exemption policy, which gives our schools some additional flexibility than zero in this case, if that is what you determine.
Are there other comments or questions before we vote? All in favor, raise your right hand. It looks to me like a 10-zero vote. Thank you.
If you ever get a chance, board members, to eat one of Cheryl Johnson's simon rolls, people die for those, and I'm sure there's no calories, and they meet the nutritional standards.
If they're in the correct portion size. Well, and some of our schools are-
You bring them, watch it awhile, and they last about three minutes.
Some of our schools are kind of getting smarter about that, too. I mean, they're gonna be able to sell some of the same items. They'll just be in an appropriate portion size, which is, that's okay. They can buy more than one if they want to, that'll be priced appropriately, but it is helping them learn what a portion size should be, which we are partly in educational program, as you know, with the National School of Engineering.
Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is about a portion size.
Uh huh.
Is the portion size, this is a question I've been asking, I don't know, is a portion size for a first grader the same as it is for a junior in high school?
No.
Okay.
There are different amounts of calories and portions for three different age grade groups.
Okay, good, because I was asked that, and I, because they said, well, they can't possibly, you know, and they're, they're doing this, and how can a high schooler eat the same as a first grader? I said, I don't know.
No, based on the Institute of Medicine, their calorie ranges. Thank you all very much. Our schools will be happy to have a policy in place. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Myers and Susan Halbert. We're going to talk about our amendments to licensure regulations.
Okay. It's a pleasure to be before you again. If you recall, last time we were together, we had a receive item on the various regs, reg changes we're pursuing, and since that time, the statute was passed and signed into, I guess it becomes law July 1, or something goes into effect. And so, it was important for us to come back to you and explain how it cross-indexes, you know, the work we have been involved with, and the work that took place across the street, and how they come together. Okay? So, that's what we're here to do today. By way of, you should have in your packet, a sheet that walks back through the eight different regulations that we put together for you that encompass leadership, changes, changes in mentoring regs, the teacher-leader endorsement, the move changing over to the CAPE standards from the NCAPE, and I'll be glad and happy to go through each and every one of those if you'd like to, but the impression I get is, really would like to know about how the statute comes together with the work we've been doing, particularly around the CTE work, and the out-of-state endorsements, or licenses, and then also the new work that they brought forth with the STEM. Okay? So, sorry.
In the out-of-
Yeah, in the out-of-state, right.
Out-of, and Fed Direct.
Yeah, and the Fed Direct licensure was the reg work that we were working on. So, as far as, so, before we go to what the statute says, would you like to spend some time on the work that we had done previously, which, once again, it creates a direct entry special education license for us. It also, some language changing, changes to make it line up with the current language of adaptive versus functionality in the different special education language. The change, we have a sunset date with our teacher-leader endorsement, and so we're needing to get that going again to keep it, keep that particular endorsement alive. The change from the building leader needed to go from a three-year experience as a teacher to a five-year experience. In order for a person to go from, to seek their district license, we changed it to where they needed to at least complete the program of the building license. Whether they ever formally pursued and received that license, that's up to them, but they had to have actually finished the program of the building license before pursuing the district license. And then, we had done our own work on making, removing some of the barriers from people who were coming from out-of-state, basically looking at the, if they had taught successfully in a different state for five years, three years consecutively within a school system, then that would do away with the need for them to go before the LRC. So, that's the work that we had been working on, and we'd moved forward, and then the statute occurred, and so we had, we needed to come back and see, well, how did that work across the street impact the work we had been doing? So, particularly, what statute says is, applying for a Kansas license, this is for a secondary level teacher, and they have a commitment to be hired from a district. If that, if those two things occur, or those two categories, they're not required to complete a teacher preparation program if they fit into one of three specific categories. If they hold an out-of-state license, a valid license, I think it's worded, having passed passing scores on the test required by the state board, then they come in. A second one, this deals with the STEM area. If a person has a bachelor's degree in one of the areas listed, science, technology, engineering, math, finance, or accounting, and have at least five years of work experience in that subject matter, then he or she doesn't need to go back through higher ed or any pedagogy classes. And the last one is, the work that we had been working with, the CTE area anyway, was hold an industry-recognized certificate in a technical area, and at least five years of work experience, which is actually, the work we were doing is a little more liberal than that, in that it just said if you have the license and you pass the test, or if you have the work experience at all, you can come in. So, those, these are the three situations where the statute specifically deals with the work that we, some of what we had been doing, some of it we had not been doing. The out-of-state license area, if you'll recall, once again, we had been working on that, basically looking for the way to get the people who had been successful elsewhere, regardless of their training, alternative route or not, if they've had been successful in a different state for X amount of years, they'd be able to come through without having to go to the LRC. And then on the, well, the STEM is a different, different area. So, how does it affect our board regulations? It does direct the state board to adopt rules and regulations. Scott Gordon is here to answer the legal questions. You know, Susan and I work with the big picture, and then also the specifics of the regs themselves, but Scott can answer the legal questions that you might have. And there are existing regulations that will need to be amended to accommodate the statute, and we'll get into those weeds if you'd like to.
There are questions. I had one before I forget it. We have to go through a process as a board of getting ours approved, and it doesn't happen like tomorrow.
Correct.
Now, when we are directed by the legislature to do this, do we still go through the same process that we always have? Okay, that was my question. Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would you go back to, I think it was about the first slide? Okay, yep. Define secondary level teacher.
I believe that's seven, 12.
Seven, 12?
Correct. I'm sorry, six to 12.
Say that again. Our regulations currently define it?
Our current regulations define it as sixth through 12th grade.
Okay, because a lot of times when you talk secondary, you're talking high school.
Correct. There are other questions, say this as well, and we'll get into that.
I mean, and so I just wondered what their interpretation of, because this, this came out of the statute from the, from the legislature. So, is their interpretation that this is a high school student?
High school teacher.
High school, thank you, high school teacher, yeah, high school student.
It says secondary. I'm sorry. I don't have the definition, seven, 12, nine, 12, six, 12, secondary. So, we match it up with our regulations, would say six, 12, so we lay that over each other.
It's a big difference.
Yeah. Yeah, that's something we can address as we move forward on. As you'll see, we need to, we'll have to adjust some of our regs to accommodate the statute.
Yeah, thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Ken Willard. Oh, you have a comment? No, Steve's trying to get on as well.
Sorry, I didn't push my button.
Oh, well, we'll go ahead and, and call on Ken Willard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I, my question, I would just respond to Kathy's concern. I know it doesn't really matter, I guess, what their thinking was. They said secondary, and we have a definition of secondary, so that's the way we would handle it, I'm thinking, but at any rate. My question has to do with that screen right there, Scott, which says that holding an out-of-state license, having passed score, passing scores on the test required by the state board, what state board?
Our state board, but we accept the tests from other states.
Okay. Okay, so that brings another question to mind that I was gonna have to ask at some point, also, I'll just ask it now. Since this is what we're going to do, we're just in a matter of implementing what the law says and what we want to, want to happen, how is our current teachers who are in the process of taking courses they've taken in the past from other, other states going to be affected now? And what is this going to do to the viability or the need for the LRC?
The, do they have, if you'll find the crosswalk document, it will detail for you.
It was not in the original.
Okay. The, what will occur, this will eliminate our need for verification of the approved programs elsewhere, because if they have a valid license from the sending state, there'll be no need to go check their-
So, we don't pass judgments on the quality of the program or anything like that? Okay.
They just have a valid license from another state.
All right.
Secondary, secondary level.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And so, it would eliminate the need for those individuals to go through the License Review Committee.
Okay. So, a person who is in that process right now, I just happened, happened to run into at a reception Sunday, a teacher who has moved in here with 13 years of experience from Florida, and he's having to take courses he took when he was in college. He's going to class with sophomores in college, taking courses that he's already taken because the LRC said he had to do it. Is he gonna be exempted from having to take another course this summer because we're working on these regulations, or we're gonna hold him to that, to the letter of the law? law?
If I can help answer that question, the person that you're referring to is probably hoping to obtain a professional license to remain in Kansas, so they would still probably need to finish that program. That's part of the regulation that you all get to adopt, we haven't written it yet, to answer that question. As far as the out-of-state, I don't know if you all are, probably just do away with the LRC for the most part. Is that what we talked about or not?
To accommodate this?
Yes. This is a really gray area so far, to answer your question.
Well, I mean, the teacher that I'm speaking about is a secondary teacher.
Right.
And he's being required to take another course this summer that he's already taken. And so I'm just saying, are we going to hold this guy to the letter of the law, or could somebody say to him, you know, we're changing this, and we're not going to make you do that, because it's arbitrary in the first place, and we're trying to fix that?
Statute says if you have a valid out-of-state license, and you have a promise to teach at this particular school district, you don't have to go through teacher prep programs.
Okay, so, so...
As of July 1st, which is when the...
As of July 1st, so he doesn't have to take that course this summer. Okay.
I think I would like to clarify, that, I have no idea who you're talking about, but it sounds he's already been in front of the LRC.
Yes.
The LRC has stated to him that he has to do this in order, under the regulations that were in effect when he appeared before the LRC.
Yes.
It could be possible that he decides not to do that, and, but under the, when he came before the LRC, that's what was in place.
That's correct.
Now, could he withdraw his application and decide to wait and see how all this other stuff comes back in with the new law? Possibly. It would be a gamble on his part to do so, because he's already been directed through LRC as to what he needs to do in order to obtain a license under the rules that were in place at that time. But there, you're right, Ken, there are many that are kind of in the hopper right now in that position. And what do we do with them? Do we review all those and call them back in and say, things have changed, so everything's kind of on hold? Truly, we, we're dealing with this as you're asking the questions, so keep asking.
Well, yeah, and the reason I'm asking, part of the reason I'm asking this question is we're talking about a few thousand dollars this guy's going to have to spend. And because we just don't make a decision, he's got to spend the money. I'm just saying, if we're agreed we're going to change these regs, the law says we're going to change them, and we are changing them, can we not go to those people and say, based on what the law is, what we're doing, you know, exempt them from having to spend this money?
So noted, you don't know what happens.
Okay.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted clarification. You indicated that on the first statement, that if they hold, now, on the slide you were on, the one with three there, the three situations, if they hold an out-of-state license and have passing scores on the tests required by the state board, we currently allow them to use the tests from outside the state, but I think the statute specifies what test. Am I, am I correct about that?
It does.
And so how are we going to recognize other tests within our, our regs if, if the statute says something very specific?
This has probably been one of the most difficult parts to figure out, and just to read specifically from the bill, it says if the applicant holds a valid teaching license from another jurisdiction and has obtained the required scores on the Praxis series tests as required by the state board for licensure. Now, Praxis, putting Praxis in the bill is similar to referring to all tissue as Kleenex. Praxis is a brand, that's a company that licenses tests. Not everyone that goes through Kansas licensure is required to take Praxis if there's something else to replace it. But the last part of that sentence, as required by the state board for licensure.
Gives us leeway.
So, June 31st, if you're not required to pass Praxis, July 1st, you're not required to pass Praxis. The analogy that I've used in discussing this with Scott and Susan is, medicine says, use as directed by your physician. Well, if your physician doesn't tell you to take the pill, don't take the pill. If the board doesn't require you to take Praxis, you don't have to take Praxis. I think that is how we're going to suggest the regulation read whenever we get to that. But yeah, that's been a difficult issue to resolve, and I, I've advised them, that's how we're going to take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm asleep, I'm sorry. Sally Cobble.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I want to go back to the secondary that Kathy was concerned about. This is a real concern for me, and I guess, I don't know which attorney, but Mark, can we go in and, if the legislators didn't define secondary level, can we, do we have to go by what we defined on K through, on six through 12? Or can we go in and say, secondary in this statute is high school? Or do we need to go back in, if we aren't happy with this, to go back in and redefine secondary level in our, in our statute? Because junior high, people teach in junior high without pedagogy, that's really scary to me. So, what, did you answer me? Well, are you going to answer me?
Didn't have a good answer for you, I'm sorry.
And I...
Clean it up in regs.
Yeah.
Yeah, can it be?
You can, yes, you can change your regs, modify your regs, but...
Well, can you change, because they asked us in the regs.
If it's ambiguous in the statute, then I would rely upon the regs that you passed, but you can, you can change your regs as you deem fit. So if it's not, if there's not, if it's not clearly in the statute as to what was required, then I'd rely on your regs.
Sally, I share the same concern. I doubt that many legislators would think of a sixth grader as a secondary student. And teenage years are the most problematic, we all know that. So I have great concern about the statute applying for sixth through 12th grades.
Can I respond to that, to you? I agree with you. My whole concern on this is, is this is an example of legislation wanting to help us on our regulations, and when we don't all talk the same verbiage, and, because medicine has their own vocabulary, education has their own vocabulary, and what we're seeing and what's coming to us is the legislatures using one vocabulary that isn't in our vocabulary. And so I guess I'm just pointing out that this is another, another area that I'd like to help clean up and make clear, and I don't know how to do that.
I think we've kind of set a precedent. Whenever you adopt a set of regs, for example, the current proposal, the regulation where we updated the career and technical ed certificate and created the, the technical permit certificate, in there, we define that as being appropriate for grades eight to 12. So we went away from the standard definition for other types. So I think we can, when we're writing regs, we can certainly make that adjustment to whatever you agree it should be.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you very much. I too share concerns about the differentiation between primary and secondary. And I really like, Susan, what you just said about eight through 12. The reason I want to address this is my own, my own license is six through 12 to physics, and I've never seen a physics class for sixth or seventh grade. We have physical science, we talk about some basic principles, but nothing really called physics, because I have three endorsements, secondary math, earth and space science, and physics, and they all just say six through 12. And I wonder if that's a matter of convenience, or if somebody really thought, you know, if you're going to be physics, you really need to be six through 12. And I'm guessing it's just one of those things that was kind of over to the side and didn't really get planned with the, with the sort of planning that it deserves. And so I want my fellow board members to know that I share this concern, and I like the idea of eight through 12 instead of six through 12 for secondary. That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you. Deana Horst.
My question was addressed, so thank you.
Ken Willard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just thinking that, well, I fail to see the problem that we're trying to deal with here, I guess, because we're talking about if a person has a valid license in another state, which would mean, I'm assuming that they had some pedagogy training before they got their license, passed their equivalent to a Praxis, that they can come in and teach in Kansas. And I don't, but I, so we've been happy with, you know, we may need to change at some point the definition of secondary, but why this statute would make us do it is beyond me. At some point, we may decide that eight through 12 is better than six through 12, but I don't understand how it affects, I guess I'm just asking a question, I don't know what we're worrying about here, real honestly.
Well, my concern was, I thought this would allow someone to come straight in from, with a bachelor's degree and no teaching experience, no understanding of child development or something, into a sixth grade or seventh grade or classroom. And children of that age have special needs, and there are certain ways that teachers know to deal with them. That was my concern. Ken, did you have anything further?
Well, no, I think we can just move on.
Kathy Bush.
The secondary piece, I thought, had to do basically with the, well, actually probably the second and third bullet, not the first. Out-of-state could be anything, and it could be a pre-K teacher. But I would think secondary would have more to do with that STEM piece and then the CTE piece.
As written, it's for all three.
So if they come in from out-of-state with an elementary license, it doesn't count?
Yep. Wouldn't apply.
Interesting.
It's a fourth grade, let's say.
Because it's defined, because it's secondary.
Correct.
So we can't, people who come in from out-of-state with an elementary license...
We would have to go through our normal process.
Because our license that we were looking at for out-of-state is much more liberal there.
Then that's what we should do.
Sheen, I'm sorry. I agree with Sally's comment earlier.
The alternative pathway that you're referring to for elementary teachers doesn't change. The bill does not address anything but secondary education. The very first part of new section 30A, as used in this section, applicant means a person who is seeking licensure as a teacher at the secondary level in the state of Kansas. So the bill is only talking about secondary education. So there's not going to be any need to change, and it doesn't give any kind of leniency for anyone asking for primary or elementary education. Hopefully that answers.
Okay, well, then I'm going to back up a little bit.
Okay.
The out-of-state piece we were working on did include primary.
Correct.
Well, I don't want us to lose sight of that.
Right.
Can we still move forward with that piece of...
There'll be three options, so, you provided, the answer is yes, you may choose to do so, if we want to strip...
Well, that's what was in the works already.
Correct, correct. And your three options will, if I may, I'll go ahead and go to that? Three options?
Real quick, though, the confusing part was, this board was on their route to possibly approve a set of regs that were not as restrictive as what the bill came out. So it might have been better to start, so we're going to go to what was originally going to be brought to the board, but we knew you, the first question was, well, how does that, how is that line or different from the bill? So instead of starting with that, let's get into what the proposal that's brought to you, and then we can consider then, how is that different? Because once that's sent across the street through the process, I'm sure their first question's going to be, does it align to the new bill? And it's no, it doesn't. So then we'll have to start. So let's begin with what we originally were going to propose to you before this bill was signed, review it again, and then we'll talk about the difference of that with the effects of this new bill.
So there are three options for the proposed amendments. First one, as Brad just alluded to, is take the work that we'd been doing for past several months, as we presented to you as a receive item last month, simply push them forward. That'd be an option. And as Brad said, first thing they'll do across the street is say, does this line up with the statute? And, sir, I'm not a lawyer, but probably not. So then we'd have to come back and fix that, but we'd have the others regs going forward, the other work that's been taking place. That's not, that's a single option, so Janet, to your question, okay? Second one is, strip out the individual regs that we had proposed to you that have nothing to do with the work that took place across the street. So the teacher leader endorsement, the work around the mentoring, the adjustment to the CAPE standards, the direct entry special education reg work, the whole slew of different, and strip those out, move those forward, and then go back and work on the ones that we need to make shore up, figure out what secondary means, and figure out what work experience means, because if a person who comes through the STEM area and, for instance, gets a math degree, and they work in the industry for five years, exactly what does that mean? I mean, is it actuary? Okay. Is it cashier? I don't know. There's no, there's no definition to it. And then third, just delay them all and back them up, and we go and work on the language. So there are three options for you. Move them all forward, strip out the ones that have nothing to do with the work from across the way, or back them all up. We acknowledge there's work to be done, obviously, to line up and to do it by July 1 and follow our process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think my question's a legal question. The law goes into effect July 1.
Yes.
Does that mean, effective July 1, you guys have to grant licenses in this, or will we have to approve the regulations and go through the normal process, which is certainly more than 30 days?
My strong suggestion is, depending on what you pass or don't pass today, we're going to start working on regulations as directed in the bill, so that we are in compliance with the statute. It goes into effect July 1. Really, whether you have regulations in place or not, the statute goes into effect July 1. The strong recommendation is for the board to, at the very least, appear to be making progress... appear to be making progress toward adopting regulations. My strong recommendation is you should have regulations to comply with this bill submitted to the Department of Administration before July 1.
Okay, but that's why, I guess my point is, we will not have the regulations certainly gone through the total process.
That's right.
So will they have to grant a license July 1 to this teacher Ken was talking about?
For that one, I'm going to have to defer to Mark for him to give you the advice, because I don't know.
That's my question. If I stubbed job, I'd be so thrilled.
I don't, I don't have a good answer for you on that. I really don't. I mean, because, because, I mean, we've got a statute and you don't have the regulations in place yet. And so we're going to have to, I'm going to have to work with Scott on that and take a look at that issue.
I just, oh, go ahead. I'm frustrated.
I guess it just makes sense to me. I mean, I guess maybe, maybe I'm going too fast. I don't know. Maybe we need to discuss it more to do, go with number two.
What I can tell you is, and I'm kind of speaking on behalf of TLA, I know they've gotten hundreds of calls about this already in the past month, probably two or three a day. There are teachers, school districts, teacher prep programs. They want to know what we're going to do about this, because people are probably expecting July 1, okay, I've got my bachelor's, I've been a biologist for five years.
What I'm saying right now is we approve motion two and then have a regulation presented to us. Can you do it in that by June 1, by our June meeting?
I think so.
And then we could just, at least have it go on in process, but then I still don't know when it will be effective.
I just need some clarity here. So when we decide on a licensure issue, we have to get approval from the Department of Administration, or review from the Department of Administration and the Attorney General. If the legislature passes a law, it's done, nobody reviews it? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
They have their own process they go through, but it's, there's not any oversight between now and July 1 to see if that statute goes into effect. It's signed. The governor signs it, it goes into effect July 1.
Ken Willard.
I think what's important to remember, though, is that even though the law goes into effect, it's up to this body to establish the rules and the regulations to make the law work. So while the law is in effect, you won't have your rules on regs set yet. You may have a draft copy of those by your June meeting. They certainly won't be through the process yet. This is something that I would encourage you to encourage your attorney, or your board attorney, to look at, is that it may be possible that we can't grant an application until the rules and regs are done. But you certainly don't want to deny an application during that time. So everything is on hold until those regs get through the process. I don't know if that's possible, or if that would be appearing as if you are delaying the process. But I think it's really, it's going to be important that you do what you need to do during that interim where things are in between us and across the street.
I also think that, I mean, the quicker we get the regulations written and have them to them, and hopefully they'll work with us and do it as quickly as possible. But we're also at the mercy of other bodies to approve those. So showing good faith and having those, you know, ready and compliant, then at least we've done all that we can.
And I don't want to, I don't know if Scott's addressed this, or if he plans on addressing it. What we anticipate is, for your June board meeting, we will have regulations to submit to help resolve these issues that came about as a result of this bill. The issue then becomes, when do you actually adopt those regulations? And they can be temporary regulations that are only good for 120 days. Or we can adopt the temporary and the permanent regulations at the same time. But do you adopt those at your June board meeting without going through that one-month delay like you're used to? Or do you hold a special session later in June just to address the issue of adopting those regulations? So at the very least, you've adopted regulations, sent them over to the Department of Administration, so we're showing you're getting some effort prior to July 1. And like Diane stated, Dr. Debacher stated, we're probably going to have to wait on several applications and not make any final decisions. Because I agree, if you deny certain applications, there may be some concerns. I will work on that.
Ken Willard.
Well, I, for one, I think that I'm okay with doing whatever we have to do in the way of interim regulations, maybe 120 days or whatever to comply with the law. But I don't want us to do anything that slows or limits what we've already put into, what we're trying to put into place. And so that if we, if we can pass these regulations to comply with the law and indicate in some fashion that we actually are in the process of passing regulations that are broader than these, and in no way less more restrictive than what the law calls for, that we should continue that process. So, I mean, my first, my first thought was to just go with option one, just continue to develop our regulations. But if we have to show a work product, is that what we have to show by July 1 to comply with the law? Or will our, our current process of developing broader regulations suffice?
Unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for you. I don't know what's going to happen July 1 if we don't have regulations in place. All I can do is advise the licensure team of what we need to get done, so to submit to you in a timely manner.
So if you do that, that would not in any way slow down or preclude our continuing with our, with our regulation changes, licensure regulation changes that are more broad than what the law calls for.
If you're referring to the regulations that don't, there's three regulations that are proposed that have nothing to do with the bill, that you can go ahead and put those forward. The rest of those, in some way, are going to be impacted by the regulation.
But they're, but are they in no way more restrictive than the law, right?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yes. Right now, we do not have a provision for someone, I don't believe.
That's correct.
There's no provision in the current regulations, the ones that were submitted to you last month, that we are asking you to approve this month.
Yeah.
That provides for these specific types of license, except for.
Technical permit certificate.
Okay, I see what you mean.
Right. So if you pass the current regulations as we've proposed, yes, they are more restrictive. Generally, they're more restrictive than what the bill calls for.
Say that again.
In the, in the CTE realm, or what?
Yeah, please, sorry.
Okay, remember, these are the three situations. So if we were to pass the regs or move them forward, right now, the only one that we're addressing is that third bullet. And our CTE permit certificate is more liberal than this is. But we would have to amend our regs to accommodate the first two bullets. For example, right now, the second one, we certainly provide a restricted teaching license for individuals with a degree, but you have to do pedagogy. So we would have to adjust our regs for these particular degree areas to skip that piece. And that's what the crosswalk that you just were handed out. It takes each of those three situations and talks about, here's our current regs. Here's what the statute says. Here's the adjustments that we would have to make to accommodate that.
But couldn't we go ahead and approve what the wheels are in motion for at this point? And then move forward with the accommodations without stopping the whole process? Okay.
We know that, our recommendation is option number one. We know that this was the desire of the board to move forward. What we would then do at the June meeting is bring back with you a revision that would then address the regs that we don't currently address that would align to what the bill would.
Thank you.
And the word restrictive wasn't, I mean, it's used differently. The pieces we address are more liberal, but there's pieces of the bill that we don't address. So we would bring those back to you in June.
Okay, we have several more questions. Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only comment is, Brad, do it. We're done.
Sally Cobble.
Okay, is there a second? Carolyn Campbell, seconds. Now, we still had comments out here, so I'll include that under discussion of the motion. Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree that number one is where we need to go first. And my only question there is, will, in the review process, because there are some little minor things in there, like, I think we had two years and they have five years with CTE. So would they then reject those because they're different from the statute? Or will they just sort of overlook that?
It's, it's quite possible during the review process that they will say, this doesn't quite match up with the bill that was just passed. Are you aware of this?
So fix it.
So what typically happens during that is they'll, they have a hearing and either Cheryl or Scott will, will go to that. And then they'll follow up with a written recommendation as to what we need to do to clean up the regs. So that's the process. So it will, the cleanup or the addition will get taken care of with the process. But by doing option one, you at least get the process started.
And that was my only concern, that it had stopped it dead in the tracks. So that's, that's okay with me.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've looked forward to this for quite a long time. And one of the things that I've endured over the years is people saying, you know, Mr. Roberts, just because you're an engineer doesn't make you a good math teacher. And I say, yeah, that's true. That's very true. So I just want to suggest that it's not all about the regs. It's about more of a change in welcoming people into our schools and evaluating them, because there are going to be a lot of engineers who aren't going to be very good teachers. It's going to happen. There will be mathematicians who talk up here when they need to talk down here. There are going to be PhDs in chemistry who just don't connect with kids. But with Almighty God as my witness, this is going to be a better system in the long run. I truly, truly believe that. And so I guess my admonition is, you know, keep in mind to put the kids first. As much as this is all about rulemaking, please do your best to take just a little step back from the rulemaking and welcome people into our classrooms more. Thank you.
Any other questions? Have we voted? Okay. Then I will call for a vote on the motion to proceed with regulations as received to move them forward through the legal process. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like we have 10 affirmative votes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Scott.
Well, and while we're getting ready for our next presentation, I just want to say, this is going to be a real pleasure for us this afternoon. It's always fun when we have students here. Oh, did you have more?
I have one more.
I'm sorry.
We have a receive item for you. The receive item on the fees, licensure fees.
Oh, the fees.
Okay. And what I'm bringing forward to you today is a proposed increase in fees for you to consider. Basically, it comes down to, we are operating, you know, the revenue that we receive through M150 is then expended in the issuance of licenses. And over the last several, three years or so, we've been operating in arrears and getting into the red to the tune of $200,000. So the reasoning behind that, or what triggered that event, is several years back, there was a market study increase that provided a 15% increase for the educational program consultants. We in the licensure side of TLA are fully staffed for the first time in the last two years. And there have been increased costs in IT costs and also in fringe expenses. And so the simple math of this, for the fiscal year 2013, our revenue was $200,000 behind our expenses, what money we brought in versus what we're spending. We're on track again for fiscal year 14 to do the same thing. And so we have brought forward some figures for you to consider for next month of $12 and/or $15 in increased fees just across the board for professional, for licenses. If the board were to adopt the, and set the new license fee at, you know, $12 additional, that generated an additional $240,000. And if we went to 15, that would generate an additional $300,000. And our thinking to going to like $15 is because we don't want to have to come back every two years, every three years. And although we've been putting in place efficiencies, you know, the printing of licenses at home, we're still not keeping pace with the increased costs. You have in your packet, okay, we need to give you, you have a form? Okay. You have an updated history of, there we go, history of Kansas licensure fees. And so that will show you kind of where we're sitting, not kind of where, where we are sitting. The initial fee for Kansas is $45, whereas professionals, $54. And across the line, you can see it. The proposed increases would go to 60, at a $15 rate, 60, 69, across 12 would be 57, 66, and across. On a separate sheet, you have a comparison to other states. And we are below average, I mean, as far as what we charge in the state of Kansas. It's a pretty good deal for the licensure fee in the state of Kansas to have a professional license. The high watermark is $480 in Hawaii, and the low watermark is $20 in Georgia. And we're currently at 54 and 45, which puts us 50% below the average and 56% below the average, respectively.
Scott, just a clarification. You have to come before this board every year to set licensure fees by July 1. Usually, it's a consent item because it's the same amount of money. But you're asking for the increase in fees because you're actually losing money in your department.
Correct. And that's why we needed to come forward and provide the information, answer questions, and then be back next month.
Ken Willard.
Scott, how do our five-year renewal licenses compare with other states? I mean, does everybody routinely renew their licenses every five years? Or do some, can you get a license for a lifetime? I mean, I'm not sure why, why the license has to be renewed in the first place. I'm just questioning.
It varies from state to state. There's very few lifetime certificates. But the range in how long a professional license varies from state to state.
So are there requirements for keeping that license current in order to renew it in five years? I mean, either continuing education need to take place?
Yes, almost, almost always it's professional learning kinds of activities.
Okay.
Just like we require.
So, I mean, would, if the professional education was taken care of and we didn't have to go through the reissuing of a license or renewing a license, is there a way to reduce expenses in that licensure renewal process that are possible? I mean, I'm.
Right. Which we've, we're in the process of getting electric, you know, going paperless, which would be an efficiency, would cause efficiency, rather. The simple printing of the licenses at home is saving money, you know, in that we don't have to buy paper and we don't have to have the postage. Once we were to get to total electronic submission, that would be more of an efficiency as well, which possibly, you know, it would save money in worker hours. it would save money in worker hours and then any return postage.
Okay.
And we're headed down that path continually.
Yeah. So the fee for renewal of a license is just to cover our ongoing expenses, I guess?
Which it's a, it's our personnel investment because of, you know, the minutia that goes into examining the professional learning points that come forward and making sure that we have all the documentation. I mean, it just takes time and effort. And then currently, so I have postage and paper costs associated as well. But it's, it's like a school district. It's wrapped up in people. Our monies are.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask clarify, can I, Mr. Willard, are you, are you thinking that if we went to a longer term, longer time period for a license, that would reduce costs? Instead of being a five-year license, a 10-year license?
I'm questioning, yeah, that's, yeah. Is there, is there a better way to do it? That's more effect, that is effective and less costly, I guess is what I'm after.
If we went from a five to 10, then, you know, obviously there would still be that examination period that would take place, but it would happen less often. The 20,000 people who come through each year, it eventually would, I don't know, maybe go to 10,000 just because double the amount of time.
Yeah. Because I, you know, I just see the teachers, it's not a lot of money, but they have to pay for the continuing education. I don't know what that costs them. They have to do all that. And then on top of that, you got to pay the fee because they did it in order to keep their license. And that just seems to be a little redundant to me. And I'm just looking for a way to streamline it if that's possible.
Ken, I might interject. They have the opportunity to renew without college credit through in-service hours that are available through their own district. So that is not an expense to them if they go that route.
Yeah. I'm just thinking with my own experience, I was licensed once and I had to do continuing education every two years in order to maintain that license, but I didn't have to pay for the license again because nobody had to issue me a license. It's just a matter of getting the continuing education done. So, I mean, why do we need to issue another license or send out another license? It just seems to me that's, that's superficial.
And we do have individuals who add endorsements to their licenses. I mean.
I understand that, yeah.
Something we could examine, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apparently I looked at it incorrectly. I thought it was an action item and I was going to make a motion. But it's not an action item, so it's a receive information. But I would like to suggest that we, that we change what your proposal is. I don't like these odd numbers. From 60, or leave 60 alone and make 69, 70.
Oh, that's interesting.
I'd just like to, to me, that's simpler. And it's my understanding that a lot of other license fees are a lot higher anyway. So just a suggestion.
Sally Cobble.
I've got a couple of remarks. I guess I kind of go along with Janet on, I'd like to round these numbers. Like 54, not to go up to 55, but go ahead and go up to 60. 69 to 70, 66 to 70. And then I know we will get feedback from the field on that. However, am I not reading this right?
No, you are.
Oh, okay.
The 54 is what it is now.
This is down.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The proposed.
I was, I was doing this one here as well. I was doing, I was rounding out that.
Yeah, 69 up, but then on, oh, on, okay. I rounded up to, I'm sorry. Anyway, I suggest we round it up to 70. And I know we may get some feedback from the district. But Ken, I think it's just a matter of how you want to look at, you either renewing your license or you are getting a new license. I know I'm going to write a check for my husband's license, which is over $700. And he has to do that every two, two years. We have to pay $80 to run for this position every four years. I, I don't think that, yeah, Republicans get to pay 40 and you get to pay 80. But the, it's an insight, it's a joke. Okay. So I guess, I know it looks, but it's over a period of time. It's not like they have to come up with that every year. And if you average it out to the number of years, it, it's reasonable, I think. I don't think we're overtaxing them.
Other questions or comments? Well, again, thank you, Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate the information. Okay. Now I get to talk about having our students here. And Ken is going to introduce the group, but I just have to say that Rose Frye and I have known each other forever and I have always respected the work she does so much. So this group, Ken, I'll let you introduce them.
Well, thank you, Janet. You actually probably should do it since she's from your district. But if you haven't had an opportunity to go to Erie and see their, their project-based learning model down there and how it works, you owe it to yourself to do so. I was down a couple of years ago, I think, and was just awed by what I saw and what I heard from kids who were involved in that project. And then I recently just, I mean, I get their newsletter and so I had just seen that this team of kids had, had gotten acclaim for NASA competition, work that they had done. And I thought this is something that we ought to hear about. And so I contacted Rose and said, would you like to come to the state board if I could work that out? She said, absolutely. So Rose, thank you for coming and we look forward to hearing your presentation from your team.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ken, for inviting us. And Janet, it's very good to see you again. You know, you all work so hard, so we want to show you, bring you some joy this afternoon, fruition of your efforts. At Erie High School, as Ken said, in southeast Kansas, we have a program that's called Personalized Learning Program. And in case you're not familiar with it, it's a program for all of our students in grades nine through 12 if they choose to be in it. And what we do is they're in there for a minimum of three hours per day in which they work on interdisciplinary projects. And we start with students' choice. They have a voice and a choice as to what their passions are, what they want to study. And our job as educators is to infuse standards, provide them resources and rigorous learning activities. We also employ mentors, experts out in the field for this program. And I'd like to introduce the mentor today. Virginia, she's, she's being very humble. Virginia Wolken is a retired chemistry physics teacher who has generously donated absolutely hundreds of hours to help these girls and to advise them and so forth. So we really appreciate her doing that. Thank you, Virginia.
I was just having fun.
She was having a good time. She was having a good time. And I didn't have anything to do with it, but I'm going to let the girls, who we call our NASA Team Girls, give you a speech.
Hello, everyone. So my name is Ashlyn Taylor and I'm a sophomore at Erie High School. And this is my team. We are Team Orion from, or Eriyon from Erie, Kansas. This is Sabrina Graham. She's a senior. Lorena South, who's a junior. And Madison Seenrod, who's a sophomore. And it's been a real pleasure working with these ladies on this project. How do I turn this? Okay, so the challenge. The challenge was we were challenged by NASA and Lockheed Martin, who set up the criteria and regulations to design a prototype to block cosmic radiation for the astronauts out in space. And so what we did was we designed a prototype and sent it off to NASA, who then evaluated it and picked the top five. And from there, they evaluated it more and then chose the winner.
We have put in many hours of research with this project, starting off with going to the Pittsburgh Library, where we found news articles, not, well, not news articles, but like papers that people have wrote, students, experts, they had wrote on radiation. And so we were trying to figure out what would block the radiation or different designs that we could use that would help us. And we also got a cosmic ray detector from Arc City that helped us block the, or helped us test the materials a little bit better. Some of our resources was, of course, our live mentor, Ms. Virginia Wolken. And we also talked to Charles Warneth, who helped us get our design perfected so that NASA could test it. Some of the things that we thought about were glass, paper, ceramic, and water. Water helped, the hydrogen atoms in the water helped block the gamma rays, although we did not use water.
We considered several materials, but we decided to go with organic materials because we are a lead-certified green school. And also we had other materials that we did not choose because they didn't block the radiation as well. Also, that was a factor. The aluminum foil, we didn't choose because it didn't block it very well. The balsa wood, we actually did end up choosing. And our ceramic clay, we ended up choosing. We also considered glass, but it didn't block it as well. Also, it wasn't organic. And we did choose felt for an, well, an insulation type thing. And we did not choose rubber or sodium polyacrylate because they also weren't organic or blocked. Ideas for materials that we would use to hold it together. Our ceramic part would just fit in together, so we wouldn't need a connector for that. But for the balsa wood, we didn't want to do any of the shown ones because they would give off gases and that would affect the, affect it when it went up in space. So one we considered is a staple type thing, so it wouldn't give off any gases. These are some of our considerations that we had to look at and overview that would interfere with the design. One of the, one of the considerations was magnetic interference. We could not have anything with magnets in our design because that would interfere with the computers on the Orion spacecraft. Another thing is off-gassing. For instance, the types of glue and everything. That would interfere with the sensor that was, that would be used to detect any space radiation. Another thing is cost. We had to consider how expensive these materials were. Density, it could not be high in density or it couldn't be too low either because then it would not survive in space. And attainability, which means basically we had to, it had to be easy to obtain in our region. Okay, so now I'm going to talk to you about some of the classes we had to take because, of course, we had to do a lot of research and we had to learn a lot within this project in order to make it what we made out of it. So we took a robotics course at Green Bush, where we learned about the inputs and outputs and different robotics things to try to better understand the Orion and what it would be doing up in space. We also took the master class out at K-State and there we collected and identified different particles that Quirksnick, I believe, had, the different information they had received. We were identifying each of them and putting them into a thing. So we actually collected live data and were able to send it for people to be able to research. We also had the wonderful opportunity to go to Cali Community College and obtain a muon detector. And while we were there, so a muon, I should say beforehand, is that a muon is a particle in space that is, has a long enough life to reach the Earth's surface. There are other particles that come down, but they have a short lifespan, so they're not able to reach it, but muons are. And so this detector is able to detect it. We were, while there, we learned to set up and calibrate the muon detector. And we were able to learn to collect the data. And we were actually able to bring the muon detector back to the school and are going to be collecting data soon. For our testing, first of all, we used a UV light and to test our materials to see how much UV light would make it through. We had beads that we would put on the other side of our materials and they would pick up the UV light that made it through. To our setup, we had the UV light and then we had a station that held our beads on the other side of the material. And that's all we did for the UV light. We tested all of our materials for that. We also tested with a Geiger counter with uranium ore to see how much made it through the materials with that. We did not get to use our muon detector with our materials because we could not get it calibrated in time, but we have that for an option. This was our initial design of our prototype idea. As you can see, it's a large cube. I should mention that everything had, all the, the design had to be under seven inches and under seven pounds due to weight. And the box is comprised of balsa wood. It's one inch thick. And on the inside of it is a ceramic shell. It's in the shape of an egg because when you take an egg and you try to squeeze it with your hand, you cannot break it. This in turn would create incredible difficulty to break it in flight when you're breaking through the atmosphere. And to protect the ceramic egg from bouncing around in the box, we, we shielded it with felt shreddings. And that was, the reason why we did that is because felt is incredibly lightweight. So, and on the, this is the materials for our design. On the outside, we decided that we would use a sparkly exterior. The only reason why we did that, one, because we thought it was very sparkly and sparkly is good, we like sparkly. And another reason is when we tested the sparkly exterior, when the sparkly side faced towards the radiation, it blocked it better than when the sparkly side was facing away from the radiation. The balsa wood box, which I explained, the felt in the egg. This is our final prototype. One of our computer students designed this for us because we didn't have any programs that we did not, we knew how to use. It's one, the balsa wood is one inch thick. The ceramic shaped shell is four inches in diameter. And the reason why we chose these out of every other material we tested is because they're organic. We wanted to stay with a more organic design because Erie High School is a green school.
Okay, so we went to Washington DC to hear the announcement of the winner. That was just about two weeks ago. We found out that we were not the winner, but we were not disappointed because they told us, of course, what was wrong with our design and we got to tour Washington DC, so that was pretty fun. Some of the people we met were Charles Bolden, who is the director of NASA, and Ms. Houston, who is the CEO of Lockheed Martin. Of cour, I guess you could, no. We have been to many other presentations where we have gotten to talk about this project that we have done. We went to the KJAS conference not too long ago. And we won the award for the best, smallest high school project. And we went to. And we went to a senate meeting and had a resolution from the senate. We met Lynn Jenkins this morning. We gave her a tour of our high school. And we have also been requested to go to the AJAS conference and in San Jose, California. So we've been pretty busy. Are there any questions?
What's the AJAS?
American Junior Academy of Science.
Okay, thank you. And that is when?
Next February.
Okay. Are there other questions? Well, you've done a lot of work and, uh, we do appreciate you coming to share how you learned and what you put into your project and about your experiences with traveling and meeting people, so.
Thank you for having us.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see, I see that Mr. Willard has a comment, too.
That's okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank you for coming and, and applaud you, um, for your work. But I have, how, how was the project decided upon? Was this a project proposed by NASA? Or did you come up with your own idea? Or what?
Um, this was a project set up by NASA and Lockheed Martin. But we came into the project because we'd saw it on Facebook, actually. Our, Ms. Frye had actually posted the challenge to Facebook. And I thought it'd be a great idea to take part in. So I got Madison aboard and then Sabrina came in because she was in our physics class when we got Ms. Wolken aboard. And then actually, Lorraine actually came in this second semester of school, um, when she transferred into our physics class. So it's been quite a project.
So how many, how many teams were participating nationally?
There were a hundred twenty-seven thousand entries, but only forty-six, um, took it to the next level, which is what we did. And so we actually really just competed with forty-six other teams from around the US.
And you, you finished in the top five, is that correct?
Yes.
And did you place in the top five or just?
They did not tell us and they probably won't tell us what we actually placed in because they just picked the winner and I guess the rest is free game. So we can say we're second, but we don't know.
Tied, tied for second, right?
Yeah.
What?
It was a global competition, too, not just.
What's global competition?
No, it wasn't. The, the second part was the US. So like, everybody could enter in, but only taking it to the second step was the national competition.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve, oh, Steve Roberts.
Thank you. Uh, two quick questions. Did you have fun?
Yes.
Do you have a better appreciation for the metric system now?
Oh, yeah.
Well, thank you again. And we'll ask you to hang around for just a minute. We have a tradition of taking a picture with people that, students and others that come to present to us. So now is a good time for our board to take a break until about, uh, 3:15. Ken, would you like to stay for the picture with Diane and I in the group? All board members are present, so we will continue with the next item of our, on our agenda. And Cheryl, thank you for staying with us when you don't feel well. Oh, good. We're going to discuss the revised Kansas Model Wellness Policy Guidelines.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Dennis, first?
I just say it's standard policy. She had till 2:30 to get well, and she just about made it.
Okay. This is a discussion item today. I just wanted to make sure y'all knew. We are just going to let you give us feedback. Before we start, I want to introduce the group that has been working on this whole process of the revision from our Child Nutrition and Wellness Team. We have Josh Mathias Meyer and Jill Ladd, Mark Thompson, and myself. So we've kind of had a group effort as we worked through this process. And we've actually been working on this revision for the past two years. We knew that our current Kansas Model Wellness Guidelines were going to have to be updated because of the new nutrition standards and the new smart snacks in school and just other things that have happened, um, in the past two years based upon research in these areas. So today, Mark and I are going to present, um, just kind of the history and why we need to do this real quickly. And then we'll take your comments about changes that you see or would like to bring forth to us that we could then put forward to the rest of the board before you would vote on this for the next meeting. So we're going to use Prezi because I think it's kind of a nice tool to use for a timeline. And I just want to kind of lay the background. It was way back in 2005 with, uh, reauthorization of the federal child nutrition programs. Public Law 108265, um, Section 204 required that not later than the beginning of the '06, '07 school year, all local educational agencies participating in the school meal programs must establish a local school wellness policy.
Then, um, the Kansas Legislature passed SB 154, which outlined the, um, requirements within the state and, uh, directed the Kansas State Board of Education to develop nutrition guidelines for all foods and beverages made available to students in Kansas public schools during the school day, with particular attention, uh, given to providing healthful foods and beverages, physical activities, and wellness education with the goals of preventing and reducing childhood obesity. And as indicated here, the state law also required that when establishing wellness policies at the, at the school district level, the Board of Education of each district shall take into consideration the guidelines developed by the state board. So this put it all in, in place in terms of outlining what the, uh, Child Nutrition and Wellness Team had to do in order to develop model guidelines to, uh, to present to the state board for, um, for enactment. Okay. There we go. So, um, the, the initial guidelines were developed, uh, through a series of, of workshops, uh, as we have done with the regional workshops over the last couple of years. They, um, reached out to many partners, uh, school districts, uh, school personnel, and attempted to build upon best practices and best policies from the state and across the nation. I wasn't involved in, in this process, um, wasn't here in, in 2005. But, uh, the, uh, there were many parties that involved, um, over a hundred and twenty, both national and Kansas experts, uh, from food service, nutrition education, physical education, and health, uh, that, um, that were approached and, and we sought feedback from, uh, considered the feedback from many of these groups, and, uh, to formulate the wellness policy guidelines with the sense that this provided consensus, uh, flexibility, and local control. Then by the end of the school year, uh, 2006, 2007, all school districts had a wel- local wellness policy in place. Many of those simply adopted the, the state guidelines, but they did not have to adopt the state guidelines. They could adopt their, their own after considering what had been developed at the state level. Kansas took an extra step, uh, by asking for annual updating of this policy through the Wellness Policy Builder. We were the only state to do this at, at the time and, and were really a, a trendsetter in that. And with the data that was gathered from the Wellness Policy Builder beginning in 2009, we started developing reports to show, uh, progress and change over time in terms of what schools were reporting that they were doing on their wellness policies.
Then in 2010, when the child nutrition programs were reauthorized again, uh, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act expanded the local school wellness policy requirement. It actually talked about the framework for the content of the policies. It wanted to make sure that there were, um, all the stakeholders that should be involved in the process allowed to be. It specifically asked that school nurses and PE teachers be part of the group. They were requiring periodic assessment of compliance and reporting of progress, which in Kansas, we were doing. We were the only state that was. And it requires implementation of policies for the marketing of foods and beverages on the school campus during the school day consistent with nutrition standards for smart snacks. So we don't have to do a lot of tweaking in Kansas, but we do have some minor things we need to update in this revision.
As part of, as part of that revision, uh, over the last couple of years, we've been holding regional wellness policy workshops. And must give credit to the Kansas Health Foundation, which has provided funding to assist us in, in this venture. They provided a, a planning grant, uh, by which we were able to offer the Spring 2013, uh, regional workshops. And now we have an implementation grant that, uh, that helped to fund the, uh, six workshops this, this spring. So as you can see, uh, we had a hundred and twenty-eight school districts that attended the regional workshops, uh, last year and a hundred and forty-eight districts that were represented this year. We used the, uh, regional, um, regional educational centers, for the most part, to, uh, to, uh, offer these workshops and had local school districts, for the most part, provide the lunches, uh, which was, uh, very, very eye-opening for, for many people who are not regular consumers of, of this, uh, the school lunch. The workshops this year focused, uh, a fair amount on the smart snacks in schools rule of which you've, you've heard some and what is related to the, um, the exemption rule that, that you have, uh, addressed earlier today. What is not on this slide is also the Wellness Policy Summit that we held earlier this, this spring, uh, which all of you should have received an invitation to. And Jim McNeese was able to, to attend. At that, at that summit, we had sixty-eight individuals that were registered, uh, to attend. And, uh, as you can see, we, we've had significant school district input, but we really wanted the summit to reflect the other, uh, impacted parties. So we had individuals from the beverage industry, from the food industry. We had local health department representation. We had individuals from, uh, advocacy groups, foundations. We had university, uh, personnel. It was really a, a, a great, um, great cross-section of individuals who, who we haven't been able to bring together be- before. And I'm sure Jim can, can share any, uh, observation he had from the, the summit if he, if he wishes. But, but we found it, it very valuable. We, we, uh, spent a significant amount of time, uh, with, uh, a previous version of the draft guidelines that you have in front of you and, um, had group, groups rotate around so they could give us input on each of the different, uh, components of the wellness policy guidelines.
So where we are now, the, uh, Local School Wellness Policy Implementation under the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act 2010, proposed rule, the comment period has ended as of April 28th. And we still don't have a final rule or an interim final rule. So we're still waiting on that, but we feel fairly confident that what we're presenting to you in this draft will, this will be okay with what the interim rule or final rule will be. That we will make any revisions as needed if we need to. So at this point, then, Mark, do you want to go ahead and talk about the Red Center review?
Yes, the, the Red Center, um, is, um, they have specialized in, uh, uh, helping schools address wellness, uh, wellness policies. They have a, a, a tool called the Wellsat that, that helps, in, helps entities score their wellness policies. The Health Foundation approached us about working with the Red Center to assist with the process of us developing our guidelines with the primary purpose of them helping us with language, uh, helping us to, to make sure that, that our guidelines were clear, that they were, they had strong language, that, uh, to, to try to make sure that when people read the guidelines, they understood what, uh, what was asked. So after we had, um, conducted the, the regional summit, uh, regional workshops and the summit, we did a final, re- final draft, um, that we gave to them and then received their feedback. And what you received today is, uh, with their feedback. And, and it was really helpful. It's, uh, one of the things that I've noticed through this process is that every time we revisit them, we are able to see improvements that, that can be made. And one of the things that was very helpful from the Red Center was being able to get perspective from other eyes, uh, that, that hadn't been looking at it for, you know, continuously for, for this length of time. The other, the other, um, comment that I, I will make is that I, I think the Red Center, uh, typically works with entities that are not nearly as far along and not nearly, don't have nearly the experience that, that we have. As I mentioned, we were the, the first state to establish a process that monitor of what schools were doing with, with wellness policies. And we've really been a frontrunner in terms of educating our, our, uh, our schools about wellness policies. And I know Cheryl has heard this repeatedly, uh, among her food service, uh, her, her state nutrition directors, uh, that, uh, they, they're often commenting about how far, uh, we are with wellness policies. So.
So this is what we have left to do, then. This is kind of our work plan. Today, we're having state board review, of course. And then as we work through the process, we will need to get your approval, um, for our model guidelines. Once we do, uh, the Kansas Health Foundation has given us a wellness policy implementation grant. So we're going to be able to have wellness coaches throughout the state to help our schools really implement policies, making small changes to create healthier school environments. We do need to revise that Wellness Policy Builder. We don't like that name. We need a wellness reporting tool. And then we also need a way to help them set goals. And so we'll be working on that whole procedure, uh, to try to streamline that. And our goal is for our 2015 Spring Wellness Policy Workshops, that again, the Kansas Health Foundation with this grant will be able to give stipends to the schools to help them come. We'll be doing training and trying to help them, you know, learn the whole process and know to make a few goals that maybe they can reach and then how we would report that out at the end of the year. One thing we too want to really talk about and not forget, um, before we get into comments on the draft, we have some confusion out there that just because we have exemplary guidelines that everybody needs to get to exemplary and we have nothing like that. I mean, exemplary would be wonderful if all schools could be there. But I guess I would love it if all schools were basic at this point. I mean, really, there are some schools that maybe aren't at basic. And so it's not like they have to set a goal in every area. If they would just set three or four goals each year and make a little bit of progress, that, you know, that is what is required. And so if you hear from people out there that, oh, these aren't fair because we can never get to exemplary, well, it might be that not all schools could ever get to exemplary, but they don't have to. I mean, we want them working towards creating healthier school environments. That is the goal.
And if, if I can add one thing, in terms of drawing a, a contrast from the previous time that wellness policies were, um, uh, that we went through this, this process of developing the wellness policies and then asking schools to work on their, their wellness policies, was there wasn't an infrastructure in place to provide technical assistance for them. I, and, and with the grant from the Health Foundation, by us being able to have these wellness coaches, and our intent is to have thirty wellness coaches, uh, at three in each of the ten districts that you re- represent, uh, with specialization in nutrition, nutrition education, and physical activity, physical education, that, that they aren't going to feel so alone. That, that they, if they are wanting to, as Cheryl has indicated, if they're wanting to advance in an area of wellness policy, they're going to be able to have someone fairly local that they can turn to, to, to help them make that happen.
Did we miss anything else? Okay, so, um, we have these for your review. I, well, we didn't say, the Red Center review, that was made possible by a grant from the Health Foundation as well. We did not have money in our budget to do that. And they were willing to give a grant for that. for that to happen. And it was really appreciated because if you, you may not be as familiar with these as we are, but we have actually trimmed these down quite a bit. They are much more concise, I hope, a lot more clear, and the RED Center even helped us make more progress with that goal. So, it was really a nice thing for that review to happen. So, would you like us to go through each section for comments? How would you like us, or would you like to just email comments to us or make some comments now? How would you like to handle this?
Well, I see that Jim McNeese already had a comment, so let's start there and move forward.
We appreciated him being at our wellness summit.
Well, thank you. I appreciated being there, and I'll start with that. The Wellness Summit, it surprised me when I came on a number of levels, all good. But the big surprise was the, and at first I was taken back by it. There were hardly any educators.
That's right.
And then I had to recall and be reminded that those workshops had already taken place, and I had anticipated going down to Clearwater, but had a conflict that day. But first, on the summit, it was excellent. The participants came from all over the state, and they were from business and industry. They were, you know, from what sometimes are considered the villains, and they participated enthusiastically, and they offered suggestions. We went through the entire wellness regulations in our sessions. It was a real workshop, and we did have a wonderful lunch that met nutritious standards. And everyone, a lot of the folks on the outside were very impressed with that, you know. And I do want to thank and do a, you know, a recognition of the Kansas Health Foundation and their support for this effort. The facility we were in was, just, that's the first time I'd ever been there in Wichita. It was wonderful, a leadership center. That was wonderful. But more important is their stipends and their support for this going forth in the state and working with them. Thank you for making that partnership a reality, and thank them. And I very much want to thank them for their support of this effort. It was excellent. I can say at the local level, in Wichita, I've been on the Wellness Committee in Wichita for, before I retired. And then after I retired, they said, "Why don't you come back?" And I, before I even was here. So, I've been involved with them for quite a while. If there's one thing that I would like to see is some way, and maybe that's already out there, to disseminate the information from other wellness committees across the state. Because sometimes we get into these and they look at the rubric you have, and they want to, and they all want to be exemplary, you know, and they just can't be. You know, sometimes it's, there's a lot of reasons. And you're, like you said, that's, it's not bad, but we need to kind of change that. I've got to get an A. You know, exemplary doesn't mean A in this case. It means probably you're doing way too much if you're exemplary in all of them. But the reality is that the sharing of information and networking of information between different wellness committees would be very good, because even wellness committees can be in isolation after a while.
Right.
And people are solving problems around the state that others are just baffled by, and that certainly would help.
They could learn from each other.
Certainly, certainly. I would offer one thing. There's media in these schools that sometimes is not used by wellness groups, you know. And obviously, this media works, the social media, obviously. But also, very few schools don't have some electronic delivery system of information during the school day. You know, that can be placed in there. And we do have rules restricting different kinds of information that's provided on these electronic media now, but how about we make rules to put stuff on there? You know? So, that's one thing I learned from others, you know, in my travels. But the school districts are taking this very seriously, and they are indeed changing. And some of the comments I've heard in the past, you know, "The kids aren't getting enough." You know, "They're doing that. We can't share." You know, there are so many wonderful things going on out in the field.
There really are.
That really, we need to have almost, you know, share and take.
The success.
Successes, yes. You know? And I would be remiss if I didn't say, many of our partners who are helping us to succeed at this were, one time, folks that we saw as the evil empire. And they're really jumping on and helping. You know, they're not. They're good partners, and we should avail ourselves of them, whether it's the bread industry, or the pop, or, you know, the snack. You know, they're trying to find their place in this too. You know, so, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, at the end of the day, I left, this was a much better summit than I anticipated because it was not educators. A little frustrating at times, if you recall, because as non-educators, they wanted to do stuff that, quite frankly, no, we can't just issue an order and beat them if they don't do it.
Right.
You know, we have to be a little bit more, you know, nice.
Right.
You know, so, but they were very, they were excellent. I was very impressed with our participants and very happy to meet them and work with them like I did. So, thank you for creating that. I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Well, it was an experiment, but I think it worked well.
And they provided feedback on the whole area. Boy, they jumped in there, and the Kansas Health Foundation Leadership Group did a fine job, excellent job of facilitating. Got a lot of information out that I know I've seen, you know, weaved into the regulations as they are right now. You responded well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sally Cobble.
Well, Cheryl, you know, you've brought me through this kicking and screaming. Because I think, if you recall, a few years back, I was really concerned about the school lunch program and was getting to a point where maybe the schools couldn't manage it. And I was worried about a dietitian needing to be hired by every district. And I think there's a lot of school districts that may go more into contracting out their services because of it, and that's okay. That's change, whatever. But I was so, in your presentation, I was so glad to find out that there's mentors out there. I really appreciate that. And so, as you bring me screaming and drag me into this, I want to thank you for what you've done and how you've kept going on this. And I really appreciate, we've heard several times today that, "Thank goodness for the Kansas Health Foundation." And I wondered if you thought it would be appropriate, or whether you thought it, well, I just wondered if you thought it would be appropriate that maybe a letter from the board with our board chairman signing it, thanking them for the participation with the school districts and partnering with us. And maybe you've already done something, but sometimes we don't always thank those that partner with us enough. And I wondered if it would be appropriate for us to do that, or something you would like us to do.
I would love it if you would do that. We have thanked them as a team and do routinely, but if it came from you, all that would be, that would mean a lot to them. If it could go to the President, Steve Cohen, that would be wonderful.
I just want to add, they've been super. If they got something to offer, they'll call up, and they're always follow-through. But they're a phenomenal group, super. Another thing, if you want to do, if you had time in the effort, is have all 10 board members sign and thank them for their support. Wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I don't know if we need a motion on that or a consensus or something, but I would like to see a letter put together, and either you sign or all 10 of us sign, thanking them. And I don't know how you want to handle that.
I don't think we actually need a motion for that, as long as everyone's in agreement that it's a good idea. Can I see your heads nod? Okay, good. Thank you. Cheryl, I did have a question.
Okay.
About how these guidelines are used. Do districts report every year on the guidelines? Tell us a little about that process.
Currently, I think it's confusing, to be real honest, but at the end of the year, they report where they are, and it's for the whole school district. And like Wichita, how do you report for the whole school district on one builder? It's not reflective of all the individual schools. So, we know we have some work to do to get a tool. So, what's in the past maybe shouldn't be what's going to go forward. But what we would like to see, as we've been meeting with all these people, we would like to have a way that they can set goals, maybe based upon these model guidelines, what they'd like to get through in the year. And then at the end of the year, they would just report their progress on meeting their goals in the district, and then also on their progress toward the model guidelines. So, they would get kudos for what they did locally, but then show where they stack up on what's really model best practice as well. But we have some work to do to get there. But again, the Health Foundation, I think, is willing to help us in development of the tool and the IT if we'll write the grant. So, we hope to do that and get help from not only the RED Center, but there's the legal, the law center in Minneapolis, who I think are pretty good at building those kinds of tools and to write that into a grant. So, that's something we want to do, but we first have to get our model policy before we can move forward. So, it is confusing now.
So, the process is you're here today, then at the next meeting, or what's the timeline?
Right. Well, if you all think that you could review this by the next meeting, and then we could have a vote, then if we get these in place, we could move on to working on some sort of a way to set goals and report. But I don't want to start any of that till we have these set.
Well, I think we're all interested in having the best guidelines.
Right.
Possible. I don't believe we have time today to go through them page by page. So, if anyone brought questions about any of the guidelines to the meeting today, we would have time for those. Otherwise, I would suggest that you look at them carefully and...
Send them our way.
Do you need input before the next meeting, then, if we send you an email?
That would be best, yes. And then we could, in the next packet, if I get your emails, and we would make any, we could add to these with your suggestions, and then you all could review it.
Is that approach acceptable to everybody? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all very much for your support of our wellness policies.
Okay. We will go to the next item on our agenda. That is to act on the application for licensure for Nancy Burris. We've had this issue before us two previous times at our meeting, so I think we're all well acquainted with the background information and the issue. But we need, at this time, to have a vote, and a motion to either accept or reject the Sally Cobble.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the Professional Practice Commission for Nancy Burris.
Our motion needs to be in the, we are not accepting the recommendation because we're beyond that phase in this process. As a board, we have to move to either accept the application or reject the application.
I accept the application.
Is that correct?
I move to accept the application.
Okay. It's been moved by Sally Cobble to accept the application. And the application we are referring to is the application for a substitute teaching license. Emergency, emergency substitute teaching license. Is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jim McNeese. Kathy Bush has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are we approving this license that we are approving only the emergency substitute teaching license? And if there's any other license, they'd have to be reviewed by the permission?
We have to be specific about that, and I would ask that maybe you suggest that we limit this action to the emergency substitute license that was requested, and it would not include any approval of further licenses.
That's what I would like to, if...
Yeah, I'll let Mark clarify that.
The reason that's important is because the recommendation from the PPC had some language in there that related to if this applicant were to submit a request at later time, that that would be more open-ended. So, we wanted to make sure, avoid any ambiguity, and if the, maybe perhaps the motion could be amended to reflect that you're not approving anything beyond this particular application, and the applicant would have to submit a new application for any other extensions or any other approval.
Is that acceptable to Sally? How about Jim?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion is to accept the application for this particular emergency substitute Is there discussion? Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just procedural for our attorney. If we were to reject this, we have to go further and have some finding of fact in law, or stipulate why? We have to give reasons. Is that accurate?
That is correct, because then the next step for this applicant would be to appeal to the District Court of Shawnee County, and you would want the final order of this board to reflect the basis for, the factual basis for the denial. So, you would need to include some commentary and some rationale to support the decision, so that the decision would be upheld at the District Court.
Okay. I have to confess, I'm not happy being boxed in that way. I feel boxed in. I mean, I think if we would have voted to deny, that should be the end of it. That's just my opinion, but I certainly respect our counsel's counsel. Thank you.
And just to be clear, emergency substitute licenses, and correct me if I'm wrong, have to be renewed every year, and a fee paid each year for that license. And there's a limit to how many days someone with that type of license can be in a classroom and so forth. Other discussion? Then let's vote on the motion to approve the license of Nancy Burris for an emergency substitute license. And that's it. All in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All opposed? Three. The vote was seven to three with Willard, Campbell, and my mind, Horst in opposition. Well, next we have an update on state assessments. Scott and Brad.
Jana, if I might interrupt, since Gary Muselman's our outside guest, and he's been waiting, would it be a big deal to put him ahead?
No, that would be fine. Gary, he's sitting behind something. I didn't, yeah.
Maybe that's up to them, but...
Brad, could Gary go first?
Thank you.
Sorry, Gary. I was oblivious there.
Certainly not necessary. I'm fine.
Okay, thanks.
As long as I'm here, I'm not getting in other trouble, so. I believe Peggy has given you, in your materials, some bylaw changes. I'm here today to appear before you regarding bylaw changes for the KSHSAA, which are necessitated by changes in statute, KSA 72130, which is a result of the passage of Senate Substitute for House Bill 2197, which we didn't want, you didn't want. It's what nobody wants, but we got it. So, the point is that there are, the bylaw changes must, under Kansas statute, again, 72130, and I brought you the handbook if you want to look at that, because it's in our handbook. You are still the body that must... The bylaw changes must, under Kansas statute, again, 72-130, and I brought you the handbook if you want to look at that, because it's in our handbook. You are still the body that must approve any bylaw changes that the State High School Activities Association makes. So for benefit of council, on page 12 of the books that I've distributed to you, on left-hand column under 72-130, subsection A, small subsection 4, reads that we should, we, the association, should admit to the State Board of Education for its approval or disapproval prior to adoption, any amendments, additions, alterations, modifications, to our articles of incorporation, bylaws, amendments thereto, et cetera. So by necessity, we have to have you take action to approve what has been changed in statute. This is always a two-step process. Last Friday night, our Board of Directors, excuse me, not last Friday night, I guess it was a week prior, it was May 2, our Board of Directors, which is our legislative body, Carolyn sits on that board, Jim sits on that board as your representatives at this time, voted 62 in favor, no votes opposed, to proceed with the bylaw changes that we've given to you. We really can't do otherwise. We can't thumb our nose at the statutory change and say, "Thank you, we're not interested in complying with the law." So we have to comply with the law. And step two, of course, is for you to hopefully understand the reason and the rationale. Please don't ask me to try to defend or give... I can give you explanations, I'll answer whatever questions I can. But again, this is not a change we sought, we did not set this in motion. One of the things we guarantee to do is make about 50% of the people unhappy 100% of the time, because we deal with children, we deal with rules, and we make rulings, and we assign games, and officials who work to your grandson's game, you know, or your granddaughter's game. And so we just, by nature of what we do, have people who are unhappy. It appears to be an increasing trend that people in legislative positions or other positions of authority choose to use those offices for personal reasons and enact rule changes, be it high school swimming, or in this case, where you play your high school football championship games, which is really what's behind this change. Since 2006, if you can believe it or not, we've been dealing with one discontented individual who has great political connections, and each time he's succeeded a little further and further. And in the process, this became a bigger issue about, well, let's change the system. If we can't get what we want, maybe we can get a place at the table. So that's really what's here. You know, that's what brings us here. That's kind of our world. And, you know, as a former colleague of mine, 10-year legislator, former staff member Rick Bowden said, you know, "When the camel gets his nose under the tent, you don't know where they're going to go next." And Dina and others who serve, have served in the legislature know full well what I'm talking about. So, you know, it is what it is. Effectively, in 50 words or less, the change is simply this. This bill started out to be significantly different than what it officially was recorded and signed into law. The House passed this bill in March of 2013. It went to the Senate side during the summer. We began to work with some of the leadership in the Senate Education Committee, some of your former colleagues, and amended the bill successfully to basically hold schools harmless. This bill sought to change how leagues do their business at the local level by having schools identify a parent, non-school employee. Heaven forbid it be somebody employed by a school, because they wouldn't know how to make good decisions for young people. I don't understand the logic, it's never made sense to me. But somehow, we're going to, you know, change the governance and it'll be better. The end result is this bill changes only one thing. We have four at-large appointed members to our Board of Directors. And if you would, since I'm an old school teacher here, former and old, I guess both would be correct. Now, on page nine, top right-hand corner, there are four individuals, and I'd like you to know who they are and what their background is. Because collaboratively, this State Board of Ed and our Executive Board have appointed these four individuals in recent years. And there have been, for 21 years, appointees who have always been intended, as we've read the bylaws and the statutory language and the legislature's intent, very carefully selected to do three things. One is bring greater diversity by gender to our governing body. The second is to bring greater ethnic diversity to our governing body. And the third is to ensure that all four Kansas congressional districts were represented. So as we look at these people, just to give you, you know, you know some of them probably. Teresa Clouch is the Vice President of Student Affairs at Baker University. Dr. Clouch is a very accomplished woman, incredibly involved in the young people in higher education in Kansas, and knows our programs, has worked with us through our KAY leadership program since she was a high school girl. I'm not asking her age, but that spans probably several decades, we'll just be delicate. Doug Glenn is a former member of the Topeka 501 School Board. Doug is a CPA here in Topeka. Frank Anderson, many of you know Frank, probably. He's a member of the Seaman Board of Education. Frank's a native of about as far west of Kansas as you can get. I grew up in Ness City, but there's about 120 miles still west of there. And Frank came from Sharon Springs, that area of Kansas. He is the immediate past president of the Kansas School Boards Association. So when I sought contact and talked with both Dr. Heim and KASB and the Superintendent Mike Mathis at Seaman to make sure that wouldn't be putting too many demands on Frank's time before we invited him, they were all in agreement, he'd be great. So these are the people that are going to leave our board and be replaced by gubernatorial appointments. Michelle Kuhn is a Wichita South High School Athletic Activities Director, very, very outstanding young woman. She's finished six-year terms. The way this legislation was written is these four positions will naturally reach at least a conclusion of their two-year term. They're appointed two years at a time for a maximum of three years. So Michelle is finishing her sixth year, Frank is finishing his second year, so their immediate two-year terms are over. So the transition that occurs under this law is the Governor's Office and their Appointments Department will identify the replacements for those two individuals. One year from now, the other two individuals' terms will conclude, and the two other individuals will be identified. The four gubernatorial appointees will serve on our Board of Directors just in these four spots. Same number of people, it's no additions, it's just a switch, and how were they identified? I don't know whether that's a swipe at you, or a swipe at us, or a swipe at all of us, but that's what the law is. Also, in year two, the first two gubernatorial appointees will come sit as voting members of the Executive Board, which you see this body to the upper-left page of eight. Currently, our board is 11 members. Next year's, the elections for next year's board stands at 11 as well. That board can be somewhat flexible by a member or two, because in our bylaws, which isn't necessarily required by statute, but we do it anyway, Kansas has chosen, for the last 20-plus years, since '92, to ensure that we have both female and ethnic representation, all four congressional districts, and a superintendent on our Executive Board. Our Executive Board function is very much like the Management Board. It's the school board of a local district, it's the comparison to you all. This larger board of 76, perhaps, would better be named our Legislative Assembly. And then our Appeal Board is a third, different body altogether, and they meet on call, they're sort of our due process board, if you will, to settle any disputes. So in summary, and I've taken more of your time than I intended, you had, in a red-line version, changes to our bylaws. And as our attorney and I crafted the wording of those bylaw changes, we were extremely careful to be very, very attentive and literally lifted word-for-word some passages directly from the statute. And I think that's very important, and counsel can certainly disagree if he wants, but our thinking is this, there'll be a day when I'm long gone, there'll be other people who won't remember, why did we change this? Why is this written this way? And we feel it's always best that the bylaw be pretty much in sync with the verbiage of the statute when it seems to make good sense. And that way, there's no questioning about, what do they mean? How come they wrote it this way? I have had a very, very positive and a very, you know, very appropriate and friendly conversation with the Governor's Appointments Person last week, and explained to her the history of these four appointments. And without being too abrasive, tried to suggest that certainly the language is still in this statute that says these positions should be used to increase the diversity of the membership on our board. Because I had a legislator or two, and Mr. Willard and I were in the conference committee hearing as we watched, and of course, conference committees are relatively quick, and there's no, not much interaction, certainly none with conferees. And, you know, one of the representatives from northeast Kansas raised the question about the appointment of minorities. Talked with him afterwards, and I said, "What's the nature of your concern?" And he said, "I just want to be sure that, you know, the intent of the legislative language here is followed." And it sometimes concerns me that we don't seem to always have enough attention paid to that. And I wanted to ask him, "Well, then, why did you vote against us on this bill?" I restrained myself and didn't ask that question. But I said, "You know, I'm glad to hear that somebody else is interested as well, because we're extremely interested that this language, which is still part of this now new statute, be the intent of, the legislative intent be honored." They shouldn't be appointing numbers of people that we already have too many of. Old guys that look like me, okay? We don't need more of them, we need more females. Just for your edification, of those 72 to 76 members every year, 20 to 25 of our members are new every year, 20 to 25 of those members are going to be female every year. We cover all four congressional districts with, you know, multiple, multiple people. Obviously, the geographic size of some districts and the number of schools in the big first district or the second congressional district gives them more, you know, more presence. So just to summarize, and I would assume, hopefully, that I've answered, tried to anticipate some of your questions, I'll be happy to stand for other questions, as long as you don't under... You know, as long as you remember, don't kill the messenger, because I didn't necessarily ask for this to happen. We just tried to do damage control and bring it down to a more manageable change. So we need to have you do this, because our new year begins July 1. And I frankly don't want to stand in that office and not be in compliance with Kansas statute. We get accused of a lot of things, but I don't want to be accused of that.
Steve Roberts, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Very quickly, Gary, what percent of your at-large board, your large board, is private, from private or parochial, roughly?
We have a good number. I don't know, Steve, that I can give you off the top of my head. I'm going to guess probably five or six members a year. One of the things we also do in our bylaws addresses, we have a category of schools that are, we call independent schools, it doesn't have to do with public or private, it has to do with the fact that they're not a member of a league. So in, for example, in this area, you know, well, I'll give you a great example. The head of the school, the principal of the school, at St. John Military Academy, Salina, they're one of about three or four high schools that are not affiliated with a league for a variety of reasons. So we ensure they're represented as well. But we do have, and again, it's the person that represents the local league is chosen by the league. Some of them do that in a rotation basis. You bet.
Are there other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the amendments as presented in Article 4 and Article 5 of the Kansas State High School Activities Association bylaws.
Did you move?
Moved by Ken Willard, seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Is there discussion? Just want to be sure I didn't miss anyone on the computer. Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. I saw eight hands, all opposed. Oh, wait, more than. I can't count. Do that again. All in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Those opposed, same sign. I see Janet Wa voting in opposition. Let's see. Those abstaining. Sally Cobble abstains. Thank you very much.
If I may, Madam Chair, just a point of personal privilege, this is my last time to appear with you all before Commissioner Debacker makes her change. We just want to thank you. You've been a great commissioner to work with, and I guess the older I get, the more commissioners I'm remembering that I worked with. But it's been a real pleasure to work with you and this board.
Thank you, Gary. Okay. Now we'll get to the assessment update. Scott Smith and Brad. No one's wondering. Scott, are you more relaxed than you were last time we saw you?
I think so. Actually, I am. That's a very good question. So thank you, Madam Chair. Our goal today, as it always is, is to let you know with the greatest amount of precision as possible what we know about assessments. And truth about the assessment's always sort of a function of time. And just to recall, we voted to extend the testing window. We have, Friday is the close date. So in preparing the slides for today, the CET staff and I really tried to focus on what we could provide this board that was valid and reliable, which is sort of the theme going forward, actually, into the next couple of months. Dr. Perry and Nick Stute from CET cannot be here today, they're actually in Juneau, Alaska. So a three-hour difference makes some of the data transfer back and forth, some of the email to me a little bit tricky. Got some late email last night. So this is hot off the presses, as current as I could make it. So what are we looking at here? We'll start off with an exciting spreadsheet. We have, at present, approximately 524,346 complete assessments. So in thinking about this, what I thought I would do is to remind folks exactly how we create a population in the state. So I'm going to jump forward to the next slide here. We define our population of assessed population in Kansas according to TEST records submitted. So if you look at the total number of test records here, you'll see a figure of 619,903. So what does that mean? Well, we definitely don't have 619,000 students in Kansas. This basically represents the assessed grades, three through seven, and once in high school. Approximately, I'm ballparking this, about 30,000 students per grade level, give or take, times seven tested grades, grade three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and once in high school. So you factor that out, something along the lines of 21, or 210,000 students. So if we, 210,000 students for mathematics, 210,000 students for English Language Arts, and then if you add into that three tested grades for science, that gives us that population of about 600... And again, this is very, very general. So, but I thought it was important that you all be comfortable with what it is you're looking at. So then the question is, of all of those students in Kansas who are registered for a test, 619,000, how many on this date, as of last night, actually, as of yesterday, have a completed test? Given all that's happened, how many have gotten from beginning to end? 524,346, which gives us that percentage of 84%, which, in my humble opinion, is actually quite remarkable, given the challenges this year. So one might ask, Scott, what do we know about that 16% that's left out? What's going on there? Well, included in that 16% might be a student who, very early in the test window, when the zombie attack, and that's exactly what we're referring to it as it now, occurred, they became very, very frustrated. They took four or five questions and they simply gave up. That is not a complete test. So that is in stasis now, so to speak. It would also include any student who, for whom there is a TEST record submitted, they're on the horizon, they are in the denominator, but they didn't even attempt. They are included in there. So we will know more later on, but for right now, I thought we owed you what we know. The other important part about this simple numerator-denominator here is it's at the state. It's not a ratio that we often... The other important part about this, this simple numerator-denominator here, is it's at the state. It's not a ratio that we often talk about. There are districts, at the district level, there will be districts who have 100% participation, but it's, it's only when we look at the state that we see that 16% that's not included. And again, when, after the sausage is made, so to speak, we're going to be looking at building-level performance participation and district-level participation, so this is kind of a unique figure that, that I'm presenting to you, but I thought, this is really probably the best way to think about it right now. Again, I want to underscore just absolutely remarkable fortitude on behalf of the districts. C E T E, and I almost brought a picture, but I just wasn't that organized, C E T E met with district staff at Aletha two weeks ago, their test coordinator, curriculum coordinator, district leadership, just to kind of have a, a talk about how things went, and it went very, very well. That's an example, I think, of, of their reaching out to district folks to talk about how we can improve things. So if you go back to this slide, this may make more sense now. We can see at grade 10, the completed tests, 25,000, grade 11, 24,000, 29,000, those all contribute to that, that final number that I've given you. So what will happen in the next three days? The testing window closes the 16th. Will we increase that numerator by a large percentage? We don't know. We know, for example, there is a timestamp for every single assessment that was begun, so for example, we know if a, if a student assessment was started very early in the test window, when we were not doing a very good job of controlling for the tack, the attack, it's unlikely that that student at this point in the school year will reopen that assessment and, and take it. So, but, but not impossible, just improbable, I guess, so that's kind of where we are. The next important point, the Technical Advisory Council. I've visited with Brad before, and I said, one giant, giant question mark I have right now is what, what the presentation will look like going forward in June and July, because it's somewhat dependent on our Technical Advisory Council meeting and the kinds of analysis that C E T E is going to be doing. Eventually, this board will receive a fairly sophisticated, I'll say, study, lack of a better word, of what happened, and it may actually come with, with a suggestion for a recommendation, I'm not entirely certain at this point, but I do know that our Technical Advisory Council meets May 21st and 22nd, and these are the large discussion points that we'll be running through. So the assessment data analysis, what can be reported validly? What can we accomplish at the building level, what can we accomplish at the district level, and what, if anything, can we accomplish at the student level? We will also be focusing on, what is always a focus, is reporting assessments for improving instruction, that's what teachers and staff really need. What should those reports look like, and how do we accomplish that, given what's happened? Also, item level analysis, what have we learned about how particular test questions perform or quote-unquote interact with students? In some very preliminary conversations with Dr. Perry, she's pretty confident that, given the 84% students, that we're going to have good item-level data, and that it's stratified and random enough, perhaps random, stratified enough, I'll forget random for the moment, across the state, that we'll know, for example, if we have a new test question that involves moving a vector across a coordinate plane, how that's, how that's working, which is entirely new for students. Again, they're moving out of a world of static multiple-choice questions into a world in which they're actually moving and manipulating these, and when CE conducts their analysis, they need to look very carefully at, what, what does this look like when we look at, say, this particular subgroup? Are there any anomalies in the data? There might be something that's causing problems for this population of students. Preventing future cyber attacks, that, that will be something we discuss, accountability ramifications, and looking forward to setting cut scores. So again, I want to mention that this particular Technical Advisory Council meeting is closed, which is unique for Kansas, we have always allowed, in fact invited, members of our Kansas Assessment Advisory Council, which is really district-level people into the meetings, and it's essentially an open meeting, but because of the nature of this particular meeting, we just thought it best, in order to protect schools, to protect the data, which is all very preliminary, we thought it best to move forward, and the Technical Advisory Council understands completely, and they agree.
Scott, before you go on, we have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Does it interrupt your flow if we let them ask them now before they forget? Okay, John Bacon.
Thank you. Scott, on, on the page, this page.
Yes.
Obviously, you probably have the total tests for each category, and have you looked at that and looked at the percentage to try to evaluate where the culprits are, and whether there's something that stands out in one particular grade level that higher than the other?
That's, that's an excellent question. We will, but that's not something, that's exactly the kind of thing that I was hesitant to bring when the test window was still sort of ongoing, insofar as this is kind of a, a public meeting. We want to know, we will want to know eventually whether or not a particular grade level dropped in participation.
Well, I, you know, my conversation with some superintendents was that several individuals had computer crashes multiple times, when they were, you know, maybe 70, 80% complete, and then it would crash, and they'd have to start over. So I was just wondering if that was in one particular grade level, one particular test, you know, so we could kind of figure out where the issues are.
Well, that, that's.
Or the particular time of the day that the tests were taken?
The timestamps will be something that we look at. We'll also be looking at particular regions, so for example, if we know that, for whatever reason, these particular districts in this region of the state, these students, third graders, the test is incomplete, but we do know 80% of the questions were finished.
Yeah.
It isn't the case that they simply got on, two or three, started the test, and, and left. A large number, in fact, the majority of the questions were finished. One question, what do we do with that test?
And when you have crashes like that, can you tell how many individuals were on the system testing at that time?
We can, yes. The other thing, I'll.
Is this all information that's going to be coming to us, when we evaluate?
Well, that's actually something that I wanted to, to mention, what this board will receive, what you want to receive, is not, it's sort of a, it's guesswork for me at that point. We can arrange, and I also, I'm assuming that the more we provide you, the more questions will, will come, so when you look at this, I think, oh, well, what about this? So Dr. Perry and I are, as soon as the TAC meeting is over, the 21st and 22nd, we're going to sit down and begin thinking about what would make sense for the next presentation, and more importantly, how much time is needed, at what point do you need information well in advance? The one thing we don't know, and we know we don't know, that's going to cause problems, is if a student guessed, so go back to the vector problem. If I see a coordinate plane with a moving vector and some sort of algebraic problem that I'm supposed to work through, and I'm frustrated, and I guess, that should be held, I should be held accountable for that. However, if I don't see, if the, if the coordinate plane is only partial, say just quadrant one, there's a problem, it's buffering, and I, I'm really getting irritated, and my teacher says, Scott, you know what, let's just move on, and I move on, and the next problem is okay, but I answer the question. In other words, I answer just to move on, that shouldn't be, the student shouldn't be held accountable for that. That we don't know. It's impossible for us to know what that, at the user interface level, what they actually experienced, and, and that is going to be key when we begin deciding whether or not we can assign individual students a particular score. But what we'll do is look at exactly what you pointed out, what kinds of, if we know that that particular building had a large number of incomplete tests, students weren't finish, finishing, and say they were experiencing, getting 60% of the problems and then giving up, or we know that the, the school reported to C E T, because they have that recorded as well, that they were, they had multiple problems, we're going to be very, very disinclined toward, you know, assuming that those individual student-level scores were.
What, what is the testing window, once a, a test comes online, what is the time period that you have to close that, and have we extended that for these individuals? Because you're saying you're still anticipating additional tests to come in, I mean, we're talking May the 13th.
Yep, the, the students can still get on and take the test and for another.
Because we've extended the.
That's right, before we've extended the window.
Okay, all right.
So.
Okay, that's all I had, thanks.
Okay.
Sally Cobble.
Thank you. The Technical Advisory Council, somehow that went over my head. Who's made up of that?
Well.
Oh, we aren't there yet, okay.
Funny you should ask. I thought I owed, since we keep referencing this group, and since I thought you folks may be getting questions from the field, well, what do you mean we're waiting for this group to convene the 21st and 22nd of May? I thought it might be wise to sort of remind everyone who this group is, especially in light of the fact that we have all these standing committees, we have the Kansas College Career Ready Committee, and we have the Kansas Assessment Advisory Committee, and this is a very different group. So this was a little tricky to abbreviate the bios of these folks, because they're all multiple pages, but I, I put them on a couple of pages, Michael Cullen from the University of Iowa, and these are almost exclusively university people, or retired people, and they are also pretty impressive in terms of their national prevalence. And again, Michael Cullen, for example, page after page of accolades for the work that he has done, Paul Holland, Jim Popham, UCLA, he's retired now, Bob Lynn, University of Colorado, Martha Thurlow, and, and Jim Pellegrino. So this might, I thought, afford you a little bit of help if there are questions in the field of, well, what exactly are we going to do with this data? And when you receive the analysis that C E T E will bring, this is the group who will be helping us work through this.
Can I explain why we have this group required?
Going back to a previous epic, I guess, in N C L B, every state really has a Technical Advisory Council, and Kansas, I will say, and it's not a stretch to say, we have a very, very impressive group. I don't know of many state, any other state in the, in the country who has the names that we have. And so there's sort of a third-party validation of our testing contractor and everything we do, and I, I might add Jim Pellegrino and Martha Thurlow, I, I shouldn't speak, because I'm not entirely certain, but I do know, they also serve on the Technical Advisory Councils of Park and Smarter Balance. So we're very, very fortunate to have this kind of insight, and again, they can help us with everything, from cut scores to scaling, to, it's just, any, anything that addresses validity and reliability of these tests. So it's going to be a very busy and intense two days.
Is this a newly formed group?
No.
How long have they been functioning in this capacity?
They have this particular assemblage, 2005, '06.
Really?
Well, they were here through our N C L B round of assessments, and in fact, my, if my memory serves, this is really, this, when this particular group was constituted, was at the inception of the N C L B assessments would have been 2004 or '05, so, and they, they like Kansas, so.
I've been very concerned about this first question, what can be reported validly? And I'm glad to know there's a very learned group that's going to be providing input into that. I just hope they're in tune with how those results are sometimes used, and I think this year, with all the glitches that occurred, I can see using the results for, you know, item-level analysis and all those things, I hope they will move in the direction of not issuing public reports on those results, but.
Well, I can, I, I will absolutely carry that message forward, at the Curriculum Coordinators meeting a week or so ago, I, I said, they had raised the same concern, and I think the position we're in right now is, what we will not do is a much easier question to answer than what we will do, because what we will not do, we will not do anything irresponsible, and, and publishing anything that is invalid is, is, is straight away in, in the conversation. So I'm glad this is, this may be of some value, and if you could, you could do a simple Google search on any one of these people if you were interested in, and find scads of, scads of information. So I have a very short presentation today, but I thought, what, what are some of the other issues that, did anyone else have a question?
Do you want to wait until we send it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So assessment issues and activities, so, so what's going on, sort of in the, in a, in a parallel line? We still have a very big question, how to map the Kansas assessments onto a K-12 system? At what grade levels do we assess science, social studies, E L A, and mathematics? We don't want to overburden certain grade levels, but we do want to align assessment schedule with standards, and this is a conversation that's going on right now regarding science. So for example, you may know, remember Matt talking about science having, moving to grade bands, you can understand, the teachers want to actually assess at the, at the end of that grade band, so we're not hitting kids in the middle, that's really important, but at the same time, we want to be sensitive to not overloading, holy smokes, when all is said and done, now we're just pounding fifth graders, fourth graders not so much. So, so the good news is, we're in control. The bad news is, we're in control, it's sort of one of those, we have to spend a lot of energy listening to the field, and, and we'll get it worked out, but we want to make certain that the Kansas assessment system is informed by its, by itself, so to speak. So that's, conversations are taking place, how to score writing efficiently, I was thinking of Jim McNeese, two or three, well, gosh, this may have been December, you said, good luck, about human scoring, and we're kind of still there. How to score writing efficiently and validly, rubrics are being developed right now, particular method has not yet been chosen. We know what we want, and we know what we need, so we're smart shoppers, we just haven't made a final decision yet on whether we want to regionalize it or use, how we, how we want to do this. It would be easier if of the tests weren't, how do I say this? The fact that these tests will be used in teacher evaluation heightens the fact that they, they really have to be scored in a rate of reliability and validity and all of that, so conversations are taking place. June 3rd, the Kansas, the Kansas, and this is a different group, this is not the TAC, but this is the Kansas version of the TAC, which is comprised of the test coordinators from about 30 different districts, they meet almost every month, this is a standing committee that's helped us for a long time, they'll be meeting June 3rd, and we have a very heavy schedule, talk about some things, and then October 20th, the assessment pre-conference, we are, yes, already thinking about October, because we're sort of backwards mapping from that date, we will, we have to be able to have the policy squared away, be able to help schools when they go to that pre-conference, anyone at the district level who has anything to do with assessments will need to know how we're moving forward into next year, so we're using that as kind of a, as, as an endpoint, so that's, I think, what we know at this point, so.
Sally Cobble.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Can you give me your email address quickly?
My first initial S.
Okay.
My middle initial E, and my last name's. My first initial S, my middle initial E, and my last name Smith, at k s d e dot org.
Can you smell Smith? Scott, I have some schools that have visited with me about the assessments and some things, and I thought I'd just email them to you, to see if they, if you can do anything about them as you're talking in these, in these committees.
One thing that we're trying to, trying to message is that, I didn't want to go too far into this, but schools in the past are used to having, before cut scores were set, essentially a raw score, which is a fraction, numerator, denominator. It was really a scale score. The scale was 100, so they assumed that it was a percentage. It's really odd, and this is the old, years ago. We are not, this new test is not designed that way. So we won't be able to give schools a raw score without a scale. They'll need some interpretive data, and that, that's a function of really how the test is being designed. So I only mention that because that, that's an easy thing to explain to folks, and we have gotten some, some calls about that. Well, can I just get the, the raw score? I don't need the cuts, I don't need the scale, I'm a professional, I can make perfect sense. And I agree. In the old test, the new one, a little bit different. If you get a 347 out of 500, it's, the worst thing you can do is, is try to calculate a percentage with that.
This has more to do with when the windows of time are open for different tests, and how it would be more manageable if they could, and, and some of it's some of the smaller school districts.
Okay.
And so, that's what I'm going to email to you. The other thing is, I really don't know how to answer this, your raw scores helped on that, because I was going to ask about that. But the teachers really want something so they can look at to how to interpret, to learn how to interpret these tests too, for their students. And, you know, I'm really conflicted, because if, you can't really give them something valuable, but at the same time, they're wanting to learn too, and to see. So will your technical group help us with that, or your Kansas Test Coordinators Group? Is that something that'll be talked about?
Absolutely. In fact, I'll go ahead and mention Jim Popham in particular. Jim Popham has written a number of textbooks, and I, I think if he were here, he would, I know he would agree with me, that one of, his, his main theme is that if you cannot tie, if you cannot make valuable for a classroom teacher a state assessment, then it is absolutely no value. If I can't pull from this something that I can use to improve my instruction, then it's absolutely worthless. And so that's going to be a really important theme. So the question is, can we, how can we with some precision make value for the teachers in an instructional context? Can we do that at the building level, district level, student level?
Well, especially if we don't want to go public with some scores.
That's right.
And so I see a conflict, but they, they really do want to help with the process.
That's right. And again, that'll be a district, a district, two districts that may be separated by four miles. District A, for whatever reason, their, their calendar had them testing at the beginning of the year, and they had all kinds of frustrations that are very, very real. District B, calendar testing later in the year, and they had far fewer frustrations. No fault of, of anyone's, but we, we want to avoid making public anything that couldn't explain what was, what was behind that.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Technical Advisory Group, I had no idea that we had that. That is, that's like All-Stars. People pay a lot of money to hear those people talk.
They do indeed.
You know.
They're All-Stars in their universities.
I just want to assure, you know, for those of us who are in education, there's only like two names on here I don't recognize, and two of them I've, I've actually had to work with, you know, and that, this is, this is an All-Star list. This is, there isn't, the two I don't know, I'm sure, at the same level. So I, you've raised my confidence considerably in having this group review. That's when I saw that we got a Technical Advisory Group was going to review, it's like, okay, we got people in our state. Not that they're not good.
Right.
Boy, this is, this is top of the ladder. One of the observations that I've made, and I, and certainly I've had lots of conversations with assessment coordinators and teachers and principals frustrated at the level, for the last 10 years especially, we have become really good at giving assessments. We have made it very easy for the classroom teacher, which we should. Okay, you know, when you took a test, basically, you know, it was, it was, everything worked. Boom, it was snap. In the last five, six years especially, you know, just worked, everything was perfect. And they got reports instantly. You knew right away, and we're going to be there again someday. We got good, really good, at doing the same thing over and over, at the same level of the assessments. Assessments really, you know, we talk about change, cut scores might have changed, questions might have changed, but the processes that we used, we became highly efficient, very proficient at being test administrators. Our students became very good test takers, really, they knew what was expected. This year, we had three major things that hit us. One, it was new. That was, and when I say new, new techniques and skills that they had to be able to do. Okay? Second, we were attacked. Okay, without a doubt, those two things alone. But I think what it really did, what happened, we lost a lot of confidence, because we'd made it so easy for people, they didn't have the adaptability to adjust in the field at the time. And the first thing they did was blame somebody else. It couldn't be our fault. And not, and that's just human nature. I'm not, you know, they didn't do anything wrong. It was very frustrating, and didn't know what to do, because they'd been so good at what they did. You know? But I think out of this, the test we're going to be doing in the future is going to be better for the students, you know, that the skills and things that we're going to test, the foundation of questions, will be much better. We will develop that proficiency once again. We'll get those reports when they need them. Because I agree 100%, and have been an advocate for the fact that if teachers can't use it to improve instruction, and to improve student performance over time, of those students who took the test, then the test is worthless. If we're just going to measure schools, if we're just going to measure, you know, who passed, who didn't, and, you know, was a field goal good, and did they win by one point? No. It's about individuals, it's not even about schools, you know, doing it. It's about individual teachers becoming better teachers, and, and students becoming better students. You know, that's what the whole thing is about, and we forget that. But we've got some ways to go to patch up our confidence, to patch up our system, and you've raised my confidence today by the Technical Advisory Group, and by the way we've solved problems over the last spring. And I'm, I'm confident, I'm presenting a face of confidence to our assessment coordinators, our, who get brunt, the brunt of the blame on this, and the, and the teachers in the field, and to the administrators. But to the general public, you know, if it failed for my kid, it's just a failure for everybody. The numbers of 84%, well, I never would have guessed you'd get 84% after some of the rocky road that we had. So good response to the, to the, a rather very stressful testing window, and I look forward to the reports that are going to be coming out, and to the, the growth that we're going to see in the future. This was tough, but I think it'll make us better, and it will succeed. So thank you very much.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'd like to also thank you for your stick-to-ness, because I know it hasn't been easy. I have talked to districts that started at the beginning, and the frustration, and they period quit. And I've talked to those who were, their window was at the end, and basically everything went very smoothly. My question, a view, is kind of going back to specifics with questions. There were some questions that they, and every one of them have mentioned this, where audio didn't work, where there was the question but no answers, or there were answers and no question. So do we know which ones those are, or do districts need to make sure they report to you which ones they had issues with?
A couple of things. We do know, for example, those questions that required audio files, or some kind of wave. And we also know that in some cases, for example, if, let me back up, if a student needed a read-aloud, what we used to call read-aloud, we're now calling text-to-speech, that particular accommodation, they have to register for that. In some cases, if they didn't register correctly, they had the wrong test form synced to the student. That was one instance in which a problem that was supposed to be accompanied by sound didn't work. We do know exactly why that happened, and what questions were involved in that. There were other questions that may have involved sound, that for whatever reason, it didn't appear. And I don't, I don't want to speak for Dr. Perry, but I think that's going to be an instance when they look at how that particular question performs across the state. And they'll be able to see, given the advantage of large numbers, for example, does it discriminate? For some strange reason, the students who do very, very well overall, don't do well on this item. That's a big red flag, especially when you have the advantage of lots of students doing that. So I don't know that I'm answering very well, but that's exactly the kind of thing that we're going to be looking at, at the, at the TAC. The other thing I'll, you know, I hesitate to offer this, but we do, we do make available, well, we'll have to, again, it sort of brings me back to, we'll have to figure out how we want to present the discussion from the TAC, and we just, to this group, and we just haven't really gotten that far yet. And I don't know that we'll be able to until we see how it goes.
Sure. And I understand that. I just had heard the same thing from, from districts, and I didn't know whether you knew whether it was a specific question, or questions, and it was all across the board, or whether it was, in some districts, it was this question, and other districts, it was this one.
Well, and that's, that's, let me back up. We do know, for example, those questions that require, require audio.
The audio was an issue.
But what we don't know is, again, I'm back to what the individual experience was for an individual student. Did that come across? You know, what was their experience as a test taker? Did they guess? Did they see the whole thing? That's a much trickier issue. So that's when we have to look at performance on that item as a whole across the state. Was there anything common to how that particular item came through to students?
Just to continue a little bit there, those individuals asked, they knew what test number it was. And because every student had that issue. So it wasn't just a student.
Ah, okay.
So my question is, should they report it? Make sure they report that number to you to see if.
Absolutely.
If it was all across the board, or whether it's.
I think.
Just an individual district.
I mean, that's the kind of information that would, I think.
Would be assist, would assist.
Absolutely, especially through the KU's help desk.
Okay. Thank you.
Ken Willard.
I tend to look at all these kinds of things in the eyes, through the eyes of my, my grandkids who are going through them, and my seventh grade grandson did his, tried to do his test early, and I knew when he was doing it, and I asked him that evening how it went, he said, "I got glitched out." He was kind of bummed out about it. And then he finished it though, recently, and I asked him how it went, he said, "Oh, good." So was it hard? Nah, no. But he said, the only thing, he said, "We just, I just can't find out what I, what I got." He said, "That stinks." And again, that goes back to what Jim said, we're used to immediate response. How long, how long will the response time be? Ideally, I mean, eventually, before there's a, or will they even know this year what they did on the assessment?
At, at the individual student level, that is not something that I can answer until we go through the TAC. Because that's the, I mean, if there were a number one question, that's it. Can we provide individual student-level data this year, given the problems that we've identified?
All right. And you, I know the window's been extended, extended to when?
Friday, the 16th.
The 16th.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And are most kids, most schools closed by that day? Basically till the end of school, is that what it is?
This week.
This week.
This week.
Okay. All right. What's to be gained? You, you won't extend it further, right?
No.
No, okay. I was going to say, I wouldn't think it would be necessary, because what could be gained by that? So, okay, that was it. Thank you. Yeah. It's been a long year, as you know. And I do, I do commend you for, for your sticking with it through a trial by fire. It's been tough, I know.
I think, John Bacon, did you have a question?
Real quick, I stepped out of the room, maybe you mentioned this. What's the difference between the Kansas Technical Advisory Council and the Kansas Assessment Advisory Council?
The Technical Advisory Council is essentially national people.
Are these guys going to meet too? The technical?
The technical is the May 21st and 22nd, and those are the names that I provided in the, in the PowerPoint.
Are they going to meet virtually, or are they going to be together?
No, they are here. In fact, we are at the Union in Lawrence for two days.
Open to public? Open to public?
Traditionally, it has been open.
Right.
But this year, given the problems, we sought the help of council, and we all agreed that it should be closed, and that's to protect.
For the entire meeting, or just for part of it?
The entire meeting.
Hmm.
So, and, and the people who typically attend, in the past, are members of the Kansas Assessment Advisory Council. And that is essentially the test coordinators, in some cases assistant superintendents, and it's, it's a regional group, approximately 35 districts, and they meet about every month. They often attend the TAC, TAC meeting. So it's, it's, it's a small group.
Is it open to us? We can go. Can we, board members? We've gone in the past, I know I have attended.
Absolutely. I know KSDE people are attending, but I can find out that answer. I have no reason to say no.
Okay.
Might explain why it's closed.
Why it's, well, why did we close this meeting? In the past, we are inviting these people to come in and provide their expertise. Given the world of media, they often feel constrained in some of their remarks, given tweeting and making public things that are really not, shouldn't be made public, because they're not final, they're, they're preliminary. So again, at this point, it was really a matter of protecting the data. Everyone who will come in, for example, will sign a non-disclosure statement, and that's just to protect the students. In the same way that we don't release in the fall, any district, any information to the press, why, until it's final. When they're going through stages of data, and they might say, well, it looks, it looks that eighth-grade females across the state performed this way. Someone might say, well, we need to look at that calculation a different way, let us know, come back to us, because I, I'm a little, I have, lack confidence in, in your, in your procedure, how you looked at that. So those are the kinds of things that we want to, that we think, given this year, that we really want to, we want to protect. I don't know, John, if I asked, answered your question.
Yeah, you did. I don't.
I think one of the biggest ones, though, is they're, they're also going to be talking about the DDOS attacks, and what they want to make sure, if they have a candid talk about recommendations to combat. And what they want to make sure, if they have a candid talk about recommendations to combat, that cannot be public, because people can't know the recommendations about how they build a security system. And that was one of the biggest things, not only the data, but they can't have people tweeting what their strategy is to move forward with DDOS attacks. And that was another reason, just for this meeting, we need to close it, so we're going to have candid conversations on how to deal with all the issues, including the data.
Our Kansas Advisory Council is aware of it, and we've not had any complaints. But, John, I think if, if a board member wanted to attend, and they would be, and they could sign the confidentiality statement, that is something that is, something that I would urge the staff to do, even though I won't be here.
Okay.
It, it, this is the first time we've ever closed it, and it's simply because there's so much uncertainty around the data, and, and around this attack.
I understand, I, I think I understand a little bit about the attack. I don't know, these individuals, in the past, really haven't, I don't know that they've spent that much time on the mechanics of the tests, too much. They do?
Oh, absolutely. That, that's-
This group-
Well, I guess that wasn't the part that I was really interested in.
Yeah. This group has been with us since the mid-2000s, and so, when we first designed the assessment that we all knew up until this year, the multiple-choice test, they were the group that helped us design it. So, we just don't see them as often, because we've been, we've had the same assessment for many years, so.
So, that's-
You know, I, I don't really think that they're going to be talking about data at the student level.
Oh, absolutely.
They will? Individual, students' names?
No.
I'm just not sure I understand exactly why we're closing it to the public, or a good reason for that. I haven't really heard a good reason yet, but I understand there's problems, everybody knows there's problems, and we can explain those, that we're working on it.
Right.
I just don't know what the fear is.
It's not the case, I should back up, it's not the case that we present to this group individual names. It's always, it's most always in the aggregate that we look at this. But again, while we're in this preliminary stage, and as Brad mentioned, the DDS attack, that's, that's part of it. I should also add, this is not a decision that we want to keep going forward. We made it clear to the Kansas Assessment Advisory Council, this was unique to this particular TAC meeting, given this, given what happened. And the TAC, actually in the past, has been very open to our Kansas representatives being there. It's just, I don't know that I, I can add that much.
I mean, I think if we prefaced the discussions, I mean, to avoid embarrassment, I suppose, I mean, I don't know, I just don't know why. I mean, everybody fails once in a while, and if you are upfront and working on it, and you're going forward, I can't see how that's necessarily a negative thing, at the end of the day, when they, when they see how hard we're rolling up our sleeves and working on it. When it's all behind closed doors, I think people are suspect. So, I can understand why you might want to do it, but I don't know if I agree with it. That's, thank you.
Ken Willard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Those are pretty much my sentiments as well. I think I understand theoretically what, why there's this impetus to close the hearings, but I think there's some risk in doing that, political perception being what it is, surrounding this whole idea. I think that it could come back to bite us. So, I don't know if that's a firm decision, if it's been firmly made, but I would, if it is not, I would suggest that it may be reconsidered. Yeah. Or maybe if, maybe if there's a portion of it, for instance, the, the fix for this attack, that needs to be separated out from the rest of the discussion, I could understand that. But to close the whole thing, seems to me, I just think, I just think it's not going to look good, and there'll be some people who will make an issue of that.
It was an agency decision, obviously, a few of you have expressed some concerns, so we will, we'll go back and, and look at that, and reexamine. I'm not saying that we'll change our mind, but we, thank you for letting us know your concerns about that, and I think that they're valid. Your to-do list, Brad.
Were you finished, or?
I'm, I'm, I am finished, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. This is really an important topic to all of us, and we appreciate your thorough discussion.
Are we, are we to hear?
Okay, we're ready for item 18 on our agenda. Thank you, Dale, for waiting to do your report.
Craig and I is used to staying late, loans we're done by midnight, we're in grid shape. We, we're going to try to review the session with you in, what, 20 minutes? Yeah. And the, the significant piece of the legislature was House Bill 2506, and it's about the eighth thing. We're going to try to give it to you in a page and a half, on the part, or two pages and a half, the part that applies to us, and I want to try to walk through that with you. And please, as we go through this, don't hesitate to ask any questions, and I want to tell you, if you know of anybody that says they know what took place during the session, you listen carefully, because they also walk on water. Because there's, we're, we're finding little things that we didn't know about, we found one this afternoon, little things as you go through it and try to analyze it, so, but we'll try to review and get the biggies. And Craig, feel free to comment anytime that I leave something out. Number one, and this is a biggie, oh yeah, we'll recycle that, money's hard to get. Capital outlay, law was funded, and that was part of the court case. And something else about that, that's a demand transfer, so, and I'm telling you, right now, we've told Budget Division, that amount's going up, because the, number two, we funded the local option budget, and a lot of poor districts, they're going to get more state aid on local option budget. As the mill levy goes down on the LOB, a lot of them is going to raise their capital outlay, that's, some of them all the way down to zero, and whatever, they're going to raise capital outlay in a lot of cases. And the overall mill levy won't go up at all, but they'll lower the LOB, and this is particularly true if you're relatively poor. And there's some, and we'll see a few of those here in a minute, some, and this is really important, I think, when you funded the LOB, why, for the poorer districts particularly, they might be able to go the full 30% on their LOB and still lower the property tax. There's a few like that. And we'll, we'll try to give you an example or two. Okay. Number two, or three, we, the LOB, or the base state aid per pupil, we raised $14. The law was, was at $44.92, and we're going to $38.52, but the $44.92 came out of the law. That's been there since 2008, and they just took it out of the law. And then, the court's going to decide and tell us what it's supposed to be to meet the Rose Factors. This next one is going to be complicated a little bit. Anybody who passes a bond issue before July 1, this is number four, before July 1 of 2014, that money's used to build buildings, they'll get new facilities waiting. Now, that's, that's been, that's been around a long time, new facilities waiting. If you pass a bond issue after that, no new facilities waiting. Now, let me tell you what's complicated about that, is we're going to have to track whether the money of, to build a building would come from bonds issued before July 1 of 14. Like Topeka passed one, Salina just recently passed one. We had a lot of bond issues this year, a lot of them associated with schools, with student safety, safe rooms, but we're going to have to track those. There'll be somebody this fall that may pass a bond issue, they may have their building built before Salina, or Topeka, or somebody else gets their building built. It depends what their priorities are, and when they decide to do that. But we'll have to track them, but new facilities waiting will be around for probably four to five years, because, because they get it for two years. So, if they have, if it takes them two years before they get the building started, it takes two years to build it, and they got two years to, of new facilities waiting. Any questions on that one? But it must come from a bond issue, there's, there's an exemption, I want to just mention this, I don't know if I got it on here or not, I forgot. There's an exemption, though, if you build a building in the next, for 13, 14, 14, 15, or 15, 16, if you build it on a military reservation with federal money. They forgot about them. There's a new building opening last fall in Fort Riley, and there's a new one coming aboard next year, and there's one over at Fort Leavenworth. And so, they, they'll get the waiting on those.
Is the waiting a percent?
25% for all the kids in the building. Yes, it is. But it, it's pretty significant. A lot of them plan on that. I injunction, Fort Riley, they use that money to help do a match to get federal money. Federal paid for about 80, 85% of it, but there's, they had to come up with some money. And so, they use that as a match. So, they went back and added that on. They added it in at the last minute, when it's here for veto session, but they didn't appropriate any money for it. So, we're taking up a collection on that one. We'll worry about that later. Non-proficient at-risk is gone. Not a lot of money, we'll see what the dollar amount is, I think it's about a little less than $5 million, but it's gone. This is another one, it gets a little bit complicated, and we've been working on that a little bit off and on today. At-risk funding will not include any student in grades 1 through 12 that's part-time, unless they're special ed, and anybody age 20 or older. No at-risk money for those, for those, count them in the regular enrollment, but any part-time kids 1 through 12, and special ed's excluded, or anybody 20 years of age or older. And they're not counted for at-risk.
Well, that's the, the one thing that I wondered, if it threw out the equity part of the poor issue.
It's pretty small, and most of the money is in adults, and most adults don't eat lunch, and most of adults are part-time, and in many cases, the additional cost of that does not equal what the state's paying. So, I, it's, it's not much money.
Okay.
We'll see that in a minute. This is a bigger issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, excuse me.
So, for the part-timers, they didn't exclude the part-time funding?
Nope.
Just the at-risk?
Just the at-risk piece. That's a good, good clarification. All right, now, next, virtual. The virtual funding in general state aid did not change, it's like it is now, but you cannot include the virtual waiting when you compute the local option budget. With me? When you compute the LOB, you can't count the virtual. And that made a difference to those who have a large virtual enrollment. And the Spring Hills, the Annovars, the Manhattans, the Lawrences, the Elkarts, it's, anyway, you do not count it in the LOB. In not all cases, but in most cases, the legislature felt that the base funding, the base amount plus the 105% is worth, that would take care of the cost, and that's what they went with. They started out, I tell you what, they're good, they're good lobbyists, they start out at 50%. 50% of the base is what they're going to give them, and it wind up, they got all the base, plus what's in the low now, but they lost it in the LOB. You'll see that amount, too. This next piece on number eight is complicated in our eyes. If you have 31% LOB by June 30th, you, or July 1, June 30th technically, you can go to, the board can go to 33% for one year. But the second year, you got to have a mail ballot election, not a regular election, a mail ballot election to retain it. And you're going to see a few districts out there, and their county, the county clerk deserves a gold star, that says, "I'll do a regular election before this takes effect, in essence." But they got to have it by June 30th. And so, they're having, there's a few election, how many would you guess, Craig? Half a dozen?
Probably.
It's, they're going to get to 31% by June 30th, so they can go to 33. And the local board can go from 31 to 33. But next year, anybody that's, goes to 33, 31 to 33 this year, they got to have a mail ballot election. That's in law.
Okay. When I was in one meeting, they were confused, because if they weren't at 31, and they were at 27, that they might have to have a ballot before another to go, to go to the 33. So, they were thinking they were going to have to get two voting things in-
All right.
-because they weren't at 31.
Yep. Now, let's think about that. That's true. If you're both not at 31 now, then we're going to have to have a, an election, this one don't have to be mail ballot, you have to have an election to go to 31. Most county clerks and county election commissioners would not let you do that because of time, but some of the rural counties said, "We'll make it work." And they did, and they are.
That's what you were talking about.
So, you got to have an election to go to 31, then they can go to 33-
Without.
Without.
And then do it the-
But next year, they got to have an election, mail ballot, to hold it.
Well, in one legislative forum I was in, the senator was saying, "Oh, no, oh, no, you can go, doesn't matter what your, your, whether you're 31, 27, 25, you can go all the way up to 33." And he said, "You didn't have to." And-
You can a year from now.
Can a year from now. You up on her a year from now, but you can't this year.
Technically, if you could have pulled it off, you could have a 33% election before August 1st, but counties couldn't make that happen with the, because you had to have a mail ballot, and they've got a primary coming up.
One of the big counties, I wouldn't want to say which one it was, but you'd be familiar? County election commissioner said, more or less, "And have you lost it?" I mean, with all they've got to do, it just wasn't possible to do it. And that, that was pretty true of the big counties. Next, when you get ready to compute the local option budget, right now, we've been using 4433, because that's what we started in 2008, '09 with, 4433, to compute the LOB budget. They, they increased that to 4490. So, there'll be, and you'll see that in a minute, a little increase because of that 4490. We're going to have a Performance and Efficiency Committee, and they'll be appointed all by the legislature and the governor. I just want to say, I've been through a few of these, that sounds like a simple, easy thing to do, but it's not near as simple as it seems. Like, I went through one study one time, and we, we figured out a way we could save some money, but all the local business people come in to visit with the governor, and decided it wasn't a good idea. With me? So, you might save money, but you might put somebody else out of business. And you can, you do that on utilities. We just had a session a little bit ago on internet power. There's a wide variation of cost for internet power, and we're all look at that, but if you did that, and took the schools out, it could put some small ones in trouble.
Yeah, wait, I have another question.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, are, are they working off of Kim's committee, that he was on that efficiency study?
My, my guess is, they'll look at that, but this is a new committee with different membership, but I think they'll look at that. But this is new, starting from scratch, but that'll be, that was discussed, and they may look at that and review that, but they'll look at other things as well.
Do they realize they could have 256 different ways to save money?
Mm-hmm. I'm sure they do.
Okay.
Next. Any of you got anything on this? This, this is just a family discussion. The Alternative License Juror, you've gone through all that, let's skip to 12. This may have been discussed, too. They increased the number of potential innovative districts from 10% to 20, but the next 10, they must be a district that operates a focus or priority school. And I tell you what, most of the priority and- And I tell you what, uh, most of the priority and focus schools are located in three districts. Remember that? Most of, not all, but most of them are in three districts. If you have a burning desire, we brought copies in case you got one of them, but, uh, that's online, too. This next one is a toughie. About any, let me say this first, any bill, think about this, any bill that was passed at the last minute and wasn't funded as a general rule unless it was major, uh, and they got ready to discuss this, why there was, some of the agencies, other agencies, we didn't, uh, they weren't, didn't talk about ours, but, uh, they just, the, the favorite question is, "How much is your, is the budget for this agency?" Whatever it is, and it'll be umpteen million or billion, whatever, they'll say, "Oh, they can eat it." And you don't get any money. And so, this bill was us, Department of Ed and Department of Revenue got no money to fund this. But let me hit this one, 'cause this is, this is gonna be a lot more work than people think. This is a tax credit sc, a low-income student scholarship program. You have to be eligible for free lunch. You have to attend a Title I or focus school this year, or the prior year. You must have received, or you could have received a, a previous scholarship under the program. So, once you get in, you can continue, and not graduate from high school, and not be over twenty-one, and be enrolled in a public school, which we said that because you have to be in a focus or priority school to start with. And, uh, then, uh, if you want to start school and you're under age six, why, then you can start in, in this program. And, uh, the scholarship is financed with a tax credit, uh, and this is, it says against corporate income and premium or privileged tax liability, but really, I think they would take it from anybody, the way the law's worded. Somebody wanted to go give them a check, I think that they, they're allowed to take it. They get a seventy percent tax credit. The scholarship granting organization is out here. There are five oh one C three, there's, and, uh, anybody about can form one. We have to verify, and they have submit reports to us, we have to verify the name and address of every student. They have to give it to us, and we have to verify that they qualify. We have to determine the qualifications of the student. They're in a focus or priority school, we have to verify that. And, uh, and they have to submit the names of the students who attend their, that get the scholarship. They decide that, we don't. Uh, we have to get to collect them, they have to tell us the number of contributions and the scholarships and all that. Here's one that worries me a little bit, and I want to share my worrying with you. It, notice in whatever number down there, you, you, you got, they do an annual audit, and there's the scholarship granting organization, uh, if they get over fifty thousand dollars, then they have to provide a surety bond or a financial statement. Well, we talked, we was going through that, and Craig, you want to tell them what you said about financial statements? I thought that was pretty good.
Enron had really good financial statements, too.
You with me? It worries you. The surety bond is a sure thing, but a financial statement, you could be in great shape one day and be broke the next. 'Cause if you give, you with me? It, it, it's a little, it scares you a little bit, and it's all governed by a four one, five oh one C three, a, a group folk that's formed. The qualified school is any school that's legal in Kansas. It don't have to be accredited. It could be a private, non-accredited. Any school qualifies that meets the, the requirements for, uh, meeting truancy, or the, um, that's kind of it in a nutshell. We'll have to design a lot of forms, we gotta certify that the people, they're eligible, they're ready to operate, and all that, and, 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 uh, if you notice, the, the, the money contribution will not count till next year. And I'm not real sure whether there, I don't know if we can get all ready or not, but I'm not sure anybody will start this year. Would you donate money if you're, if you couldn't get tax credit till January first? I'm not, you with me? And, and I'm not sure they would do that. So, I'm not sure there'll be a lot of movement until after January first, when you get the tax credit, and, and that's fine. We'll, we'll have, yeah, go ahead.
We have a question.
Yeah.
I've read this portion of the bills, and I agree with you. I think there's a huge amount of work involved. Now, one thing that I noticed, it's on page thirty-two, but it says, "An eligible student's participation in this program by receiving an educational scholarship constitutes a waiver to special education services provided by any school district, unless the school district agrees to provide such services to qualified schools." So, how do we make sure the parents understand, if they're getting that scholarship, they are waiving their special ed rights?
Yep. What you'd have to do, I think we'll have to design a little form, and when, when they sign up, the parent has to sign it so that there's verification that they're forfeiting that. I think that, yeah, that, some special ed lawyers get nervous about that provision, but it's there, and-
Yeah.
We'll design a little form that waives it. That's, that was what we, only thing, Kathy, we knew how to do. We'll, we'll provide it and give it to them. If not, you're gonna get them all over the place.
From Dean, I have a question.
Going back to the requirement for surety bond or financial information. A surety bond, if, as treasurer of an organization, that ensures that you don't, if you take money, it gets replaced.
Correct.
So, it doesn't matter whether you have a great financial information. Some of these folks could literally have someone put it all in their pocket and leave, and there'd be no way of replacing it. So, that's-
The surety bond would sure make a person feel a lot better about it, a lot better.
When did they, I don't remember the, or financial information, did they add that later?
Well, there wasn't a lot of discussion on this anyway until the very end.
It had the surety, it had the surety bond in it originally, but that's-
We get, uh-
Really scary.
We get into this from a school district, and it's, and it's, it's interesting what history shows us in that arena. Of course, they have to have surety bonds-
Sure.
For, uh, secretaries. Usually, you know where the money is lost in school districts? Food service is one, and gate receipts is number two. That's two. And that's one you have to watch, and it's most difficult to police. So-
Dale, I got another question.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, there's another section, it was new section fifty-eight. Said ninety percent of the contributions, and I'm paraphrasing here, must be distributed in the form of scholarships from the scholarship granting organization within thirty-six months of the receipt of such contributions.
Correct.
So, they can keep ten percent?
Didn't say what happens to that ten percent.
Nope. It's silent on that, it, that's, or, they, it, you could interpret it that they have to spend ninety percent within the thirty-six months, and the ten percent would carry over. But, but, don't talk about administrative expense.
Well, and, you know, 'cause I, I got to thinking, the legislature gets upset when we talk about four percent administrative costs in school districts. If this is considered administrative cost, that's ten percent. That's a whole lot higher than what school districts ever do.
But that's one of the questions we're gonna pursue, the, some of the sponsors on this to verify, but, see, it don't say that it's for administration. It just says, "Yeah, ninety percent of it's gotta go out within thirty-six months." Could it, you, they could say, interpret it as, "Well, we'll just carry over ten percent." They can carry over that amount beyond the three years. So, it's-
One more.
Yeah, Jim?
Maybe you said this, and I was out of the room, but I'm at a private school, kids are co, how much money am I getting?
Well, uh, we, there's a little note here, pretty soon, if, if somebody donates it, you gotta collect it first, get enough money, it can go as high as eight thousand dollars.
And be as low as-
First student. Pardon?
And be as low as, there's no number?
Uh, there's a ten million dollar cap statewide.
Oh, for the amount of money collected and the amount of money distributed?
The amount of money distributed. Where they, where you get, the, the tax credit has got a ten million cap. Ten million cap.
Do I, you know, say on my tuition for my school is five thousand dollars? So, I get five thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm. Right.
If it's eight thousand dollars, get eight thousand. If it's two thousand, I get two thousand.
Probably if it's five this year, it'll be eight next year, if you can get the money in the pot.
Can I, yeah, right.
Raise the principal salary.
Heck, yes. You know, but I'm, I'm, and, but they don't get any money from us, from-
Nope. It's all money donated.
All donated.
All donated.
Okay.
Tax credits.
Tax credit.
Okay, I got one more follow-up.
All right.
Okay. I don't see anything in here that has any academic performance accountability for these qualified schools. So, when these kids go to these qualified schools, 'cause I'm sure some of them will be coming back. They will.
I, we don't, we don't see anything in there either.
Okay.
Now, if you're an accredited school, if you're an accredited school, you'll take assessments like everybody else. But if you're not accredited, I don't know of anything in this bill that would require you to take state assessments.
Or, or show any kind of academic performance.
That's correct. It's, this bill is really geared toward the, whatever the parent wants.
What if the school kicks them out?
Pardon?
What if the school kicks them out?
Uh, probably what would happen under compulsory school attendance law, they'd go back to the public.
I don't know what happens to the money, what happens to the school.
Oh, what we're gonna do, it, it says that, what's the wording? But we, we've got interpretation on this that we'll have to develop guidelines which will turn into rules and regs, but we're gonna recommend, uh, require it, that you do it monthly. You pay it monthly, 'cause if a person drops out, you haven't spent all your money, so you pay it monthly. They distribute it monthly. If not, Jim, you, 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 you could, things could walk away, so you'd pay it monthly.
It does say specifically, essentially, the money follows the student.
Yep.
If the student transfers to another private school, then you prorate the payment. If they transfer back to a public school, you prorate the payment.
See, the reason it's so important that we do it monthly, Jim, on that, is if you don't do it monthly, and, and, and some, some real small, private, non-accredited school, they might just shut down, and they, if they got your money, how would you ever get it back? So, you do it monthly, so that wouldn't happen. Fourteen, we got a lot of work to do in that area. Post-audits, gonna do an audit on virtual schools, and a lot of that work will be done by our folks. We'll have to provide the expenditures, the enrollment, the waiting, the dropout rate, the graduation rate and so forth, and they'll, they'll do some visiting and so forth on that one. This next one is kind of interesting. I've joked about this before, but right now, we have to post online the budget, the budget profile, the budget at a glance, the Form 150, and now we're adding one more. This is by statute. We have to put a one-page summary of the budget, and even identifies the seven charts on the one page that will come out of the budget at a glance. So, we worked on that, Ken. It wasn't, to get seven charts on a page where it's really readable, we, it took a while to get there, but we think we got that. And what we'll do, we'll do that, and for the school districts, all this will be printed out automatically when they do the budget. They didn't say that, but we thought it'd be a good idea. They eliminated, uh, teacher due process in the law, and that's been quite controversial. Now, this next piece is big-time important. Top of page, whatever, three. School districts can republish their capital outlay fund, and this, this surprised a lot of people. It's a bill they passed last year and said it, it doesn't go into effect till the law's funded, till the law's funded. Now, but what made it unique is you can republish the capital outlay and override the current resolution. There was a lot of districts last night, based on phone calls, who decided they're gonna republish the capital outlay law, they had to, and they had to publish it once a week for two consecutive weeks. What makes us unique is this will supersede the old one, but if you lose it, you go back to the old one. We'd never had that before. So, if you get a protest, and you lose a protest, then you'll go back to the old law and the old resolution. But what this really does, it broadens it, and I'm telling you, this is gonna make a big difference for those who capped out on their LOB at thirty percent. You're gonna see them use this quite a bit for the following. Maintenance of buildings and equipment. Maintenance of building, your custodians. Equipment, your buses. Not drivers, but maintaining them. Acquisition of software. So, that's gonna include purchasing of software. Acquisition includes in it, in that term, leasing of software. And also, performance uniforms. And we've emphasized, Kathy, this don't include the, the central office administrators' uniforms they wear to work. But, but what they're, it's really, it's for band uniforms, uh-
Choir.
Maybe choir robes, it may be, uh, football athletic equipment or athletic uniforms. But I'm telling you, the big peanut will be, use it to pay custodians. They're going to, they don't have any, they're capped out in LOB, they'll switch that over, pay the custodians out of that, and then they'll raise teacher salaries for what they paid custodians. How many reckon we've talked to like that?
About all of them.
Lot of them doing it. The next one is kind of-
John had a question.
Okay?
Thank you. This actually goes back to number thirteen, sorry.
All right, that's fine.
Tagging on to Jim's comment about the monthly payments going out, the, the money here, in the last paragraph, says it goes to non-public. So, but then it was mentioned that the, the payment would go to public.
If student transfers during the year after September twentieth-
Yes.
-to a public school-
Can get that money?
Money is prorated back to the public school as well.
But that's not indicated here. So, the money can go to a public, okay?
It's in the bill, yeah.
All right, very good, thank you.
Now, this is, there's quite a bit of things, when we summarize this, that not here. Now, in addition, and, and there'll be some challenges on this. For school people, I think we're gonna make it work. But if you remember right now, in a public document, you publish your budget, and you have to hold a hearing. And, uh, then the board adopts the hearing. Following the adoption, you, if your property tax in dollars levy goes up more than the preceding year's consumer price index increase, you gotta republish a notice and say that you increased it more than the consumer price index. The only way we know to make this work without causing major chaos across two-hundred-and-eighty-six districts, right, what we plan to do, we're going to design the form, we'll compute the, it'll automatically compute the property tax increase, and if it's more than the consumer price index, they gotta go publish it, right, in the paper. They don't change anything, but you gotta publish. It's a public notice. We had a brainstorm, we was gonna put it in the original public, original publication before you adopt it, so we thought that was a better choice, because that was before it's adopted. And I said, "Nope, can't do that. It has to be after they adopt it." So, "Okay?" So, we redid that, so it'll print out, as our goal is, we're not there yet, we've got a long ways to go, but the goal would be, when we get it all done, it will come out automatically, and all they gotta do, if it's more than one and a half percent, is go publish it. And now, let me tell you, when they did this, it was did, it was, they did it kind of near the end, and I don't think, for, for schools, this is not a big issue, but for, it's anybody who has a budget over a thousand dollars. Think about that, John. You got a lot of little cemetery districts, library districts, I mean, there's forty trillion of them in Kansas. So, if you got a two-thousand-dollar budget, and, and you go up more than thirty dollars, you gotta republish it. Well, that'll cost you more than the increase in the budget. With me? The publication notice will. And this will, this will be tough on those real small units, cemeteries, districts, and there's a lot of cemetery districts with, all they do is levy enough to promote the cemetery. And that, but a thousand dollars and one and a half percent's what the consumer price index was last year, we worked with miscounting on that, and that, I feel sorry for that group, 'cause I think the publication will cost them more than their increase. So, anyway, and, uh, oh, the other thing is that we worked with some legislators, and that part of it's in here, but we are going to have to compute- of it's in here, but we are going to have to compute for every district their administrative and support services next fall, for thirteen, fourteen. We get that cost, it's a twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four hundred, twenty-five hundred, and twenty-nine hundred. That's school administration, general administration, support services, and other support services, the way it's labeled. We add all that up, and then we divide by the enrollment, and then we rank them low to high in enrollment groups, in enrollment groups. And then we have to present that to the legislative committee, the Senate committee, and then we're supposed to follow up and to find out what districts have done, particularly those above the median, what they've done to help lower their administrative costs. And our follow-up on that's supposed to be one page. And I said, we'll, we'll give it a shot. So, it'll be a one page, what they did, the item, and what they did to save. So, we'll, we'll follow up on, to help schools, warn schools, why, we will compute that for twelve, thirteen, and pass it out to budget workshops. And Craig's got an example. I tell you one, tell him the example, and, and I promise you, next year, this won't happen.
Some of the issues that pop up are strictly tied to coding. Where did you report that expense? We have a small district that has a large virtual school, and in their local option budget, all the fees they pay to the virtual school were recorded as administrative cost. So, they have by far the largest cost per pupil of anybody in the state, when in reality, most of that cost was paying for instruction.
They should have.
The programming that was provided to the kids.
They should have put it under instruction. They put it in the wrong line item for convenience sake, and they won't do that again.
So, if nothing else, we'll learn a little bit about how to code expenses appropriately.
Let's give this one right quick and give them the other one, too. We'll get, we're going to get out of here. We've got two more things to share with you, and we'll do that in a hurry, but...
So, they'll, the comparable-sized district, that mean like Wichita is going to be reported? That last thing you talked about, Wichita by itself?
Well, probably ought to be, the, there'll be, is, they, they told us what, how they want to divide it, like it's in zero to five hundred, five hundred to thousand, thousand to two thousand. They're in about six groups, and I think they're in the ten thousand over group. Yeah. And the, right quick, and I won't spend much time on this one, because I've talked about a couple of them, but I want to mention one. Senate Bill 245, see that just there? This, this is pretty major, and that is the twenty mil levy that's been levied for a long time. It was thirty-five and then twenty-seven, now it's down to twenty mils. That twenty mil levy will, now, they changed this in the severance tax bill, and it will come into the state. The counties will no longer get the twenty mil levy. It's been, and so, that, that will make some banks a little bit nervous, because it's about five hundred, and next year will be about five hundred and eighty million, give or take a little. And that money on January the twentieth, about half of that amount went to local banks, and they spent it over time. Then they got another big chunk on June the fifth, and, and a lot of that was spent for teacher salaries for the summer, it was encumbered, but it won't be there next year. That's, that'll come to the state. That, there's some more work we've got to do on that, because we've got to track it and where it comes from, and then we have to, we have to change all our distribution times. If you'll go to the printout, we just passed out, I just want to give you a quick example or two or three. Let me, let me give you a, a district that, on the front page. Let's pick Iola. That's, that's a good one. Iola, because of the fourteen dollars, in column one, they'll get twenty-seven thousand. Didn't have any at-risk, part-time kids or kids over twenty. They lost thirteen thousand, four eighty-two in non-proficient at-risk. Are we all together? All right? Then, column four, we add those together, and that shows they, they gained fourteen thousand. Now, if we funded the LOB this year, if we did fund it, they'd get about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. The capital outlay, the outlay would be a hundred and nine thousand, and this was, we were requested to do it this way. So, the increase in columns four, five, and six is five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Might back up and clarify a little bit. On column five, that four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, that's property tax relief. That's not additional money that the district gets to spend.
That's right. No spending, just property tax.
So, that means column seven is how much more money the state's spending? It's not how much more money the district gets to spend?
Now, here's the peanut, and this is important. Column eight, in the local option budget, they can only go up twenty-nine thousand dollars because they reached the thirty percent cap. Twenty-nine thousand. That, that's, that's a thirty percent cap. Now, notice, they're going to get, in column nine, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, our estimate for next year in LOB, state aid. So, if they go the full maximum of twenty-nine thousand dollars increase in budget, we give them four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, then their property taxes got to go down by the amount showing in column ten. They have, they have no choice. They have no choice. In the LOB in Iola, Kansas, next year, the property tax is going to drop significantly. Let, let me try another one, just as an example.
Dale, and being pulled hard cash.
That's right.
They're not getting that much.
Not, not spending power. This is property tax relief.
They're getting twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Yep. That'll take care of the custodians.
Can you help me understand the difference between column five and, and column ten, that ten thousand dollar difference or ten cents?
Because we noticed up the top on column eight, Steve, see at forty-four ninety, the very top, we raised the base on how we compute the state aid, or the LOB. How we compute the LOB was based on forty-four thirty-three, and in column eight, we based it on forty-four ninety. So, we give them a little bit more spending power, but I, I want to make the point that their budget goes up four twenty, or two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand. The state aid's four fifty-seven, so they're going to lower their property tax, but their spending power is practically none. Now, let me give you another one. Look in Cherokee County. I don't pretty near know how this one comes out. Now, the big peanut is column eight, nine, and ten. Notice that Galena, everybody see Galena in column eight? Their LOB is really low because they couldn't afford to pay the property tax. They can raise their property tax six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. They're going to get seven hundred and ninety thousand in state aid, so their mil levy will drop a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, they can raise their, their LOB because it's only like twenty-one or two percent. And so, they're going to see a property tax reduction in their LOB and a significant increase in expenditures because their LOB is so low. We ought to look at one more. You want Johnson or Cedric? You call it. Pardon? Reno, oh Reno. In Reno County. Okay. In Reno County, let's just try Hutch. Now, in Hutch's case, they can go up, see the seven hundred and ninety-two thousand in column eight, because that's the peanut, column eight, they can go up seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, but state aid's going up a million and eight. So, they can raise their expenditure seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, and property tax will drop over a million. Now, that isn't the, the case. I just want to show you, let's try Wichita for a minute. Sedgwick County. They're another one. They're close to thirty percent, okay? They're close to thirty percent. They can only increase their budget a million, seven, thirty-six in column eight, but their state aid, they're relatively poor, is going up over, a little over twelve million. So, out of that twelve million eight, they can spend a million, seven of it, but eleven million of it's for property tax relief. There are some whose spending power is practically nothing. If they're capped out at thirty percent in LOB, then they're spending, they don't get any more spending power. And those are the districts that's going to try to go, change their capital outlay where they can pay their custodians and bus maintenance out of LOB, or out of capital outlay, and then use that for teachers.
You'll see, excuse me, you'll see a few districts that in column eight have a negative number. They're losing money in their LOB. Those are districts that have virtual schools, and that waiting's being pulled out of that calculation.
Mays is, Mays has got that.
Mays would be one, that's right. Andor would be another one. Lawrence would be another one. Leavenworth, they got a virtual school, too. Not very big, but they got one. Well...
And that, that's why we have some districts interested in how can I get to thirty-three percent this year? Because if they don't, they're losing money.
Okay. Madam Chair, we probably told you more than we know, but I appreciate very much the good discussion and the questions and so forth. We'll learn some more things as we go through. The one I'm most worried about is the tax credit scholarship bill, because there's an awful lot to put together, and, and if you don't do the forms and do it, lay it all out, then you're going to have, it's going to be disconnected all over the place.
But Dale, my question is, was the intention of the order from the Supreme Court to, to increase funding to schools and equalize funding or to lower property taxes?
The big peanut, and the chief attorney can tell you, but the big peanut there was the adequate, was...
Equity.
Equity. And they funded the LOB and the capital outlay, because we were not treating the, the poor districts equitable in their eyes, so we had to fund the capital outlay and the, and the LOB. Now, the base state aid per pupil remains to be, be determined.
But the result of that didn't really create equality, did it?
Equity in taxes, in, in spending, it did.
Okay.
It did, because notice, we mentioned, like Iola, they're thirty percent. Iola's at twenty-two, so you've got an eight percent difference. Iola now can go to thirty percent, and their taxes can be more reasonable. Probably when it's said none, there won't be much difference in their taxes if they're both stay at thirty percent.
Okay.
And all those districts that are getting the big boost this year, for the last five years, they've been shorted. So, they're really just catching up to where they shouldn't be.
It's an extreme, but Galena, he called me up one day and said, and said, I can't even, I'm not going to take this to my board. He said, I can't take that. He said, they can't afford it. He said, I got to lower my LOB. He said, we cannot pay the taxes. He said, the people just can't pay them. So, he dropped his LOB, his LOB now, I think, is lower than it was, what, four, five years ago? Because he just couldn't pay the taxes. Each time, we prorated it. He said, they can't afford it. Thank you very much for all your time and effort and so forth. Words of wisdom you got, let us know. We appreciate your discussion.
The next item on our agenda is to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of item nineteen I, and that was withdrawn by Steve Roberts. Steve, did you have an opportunity to have any of your questions answered?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I did. I, I wanted to pull it to, to talk about it. Scott Myers addressed the issues. I think there are concerns for another day. I, I think it's a, it's a matter for another day, because we've talked about it at, at other meetings. So, we can treat it separately or together, either one, but my concerns have been resolved at least for the day.
Well, and perhaps some of our new licensure regulations will address some of the concerns around this issue.
And, and in fairness, I think my concerns are more long-term than what can we, what we can effectively resolve today.
So, it's, it's fine with you to approve this along with the consent agenda? Do we have to do it separately since it was withdrawn?
Well, I, if, if it's sort of on my plate now, I, I would make a motion to reinstate nineteen I into the consent agenda without objection.
Is that legal? Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Deana Horst. All in favor?
Is that approval for the whole consent agenda, then?
No. Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Good. Then we will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, moved by Jim McNeese, seconded by, boy, my brain is tired, Kathy Bush. All in favor? Is there discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes ten-zero. And now, I've got to get to the bottom of this. Oh, my gosh.
Jana, just to clarify that that includes the revisions that we amended when we accepted the agenda altogether, right?
Yes.
I don't know that. I assume it's... Before I increase the sound.
Somewhere in this stack, I have the motion about the executive session.
Blue folder? No, the notebook.
No, I...
The blue notebook. The last...
You can't help me. I don't think so. How long do we think we'll need? Thirty minutes? Well, I, I suggest thirty minutes, starting at six o'clock.
Thirty minutes.
We'd like to entertain food.
I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of that individual to be discussed or share with. The session will last no longer than thirty minutes, and no action will be taken during the session. I would like to invite into this session Brad New and Swander and to join this executive session. And Madam Chairman, would you like our attorney in on this session at the same time?
I don't think we... Do we need Mark for this? I don't think so. We don't need you. Can you believe that?
Okay. The executive session is to start at six o'clock and will be over with at six-thirty. Did I read everything?
Do I hear a second to the motion? Seconded by Deana Horst. All in favor, raise your right hand. John, are you voting? Okay. Thank you. Ten-zero. So, we will resume at six o'clock.